Planning Board on March 11th, 2021. And the opening statement is as follows. Pursuant to Section 13 of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of the time and place of this special meeting has been given by filing a copy with the Clerk of Princeton on the first day of March 2021. Notice of this meeting has been posted to the municipal website, Pursuant to Executive Order 107, due to the state of emergency in New Jersey regarding COVID-19, the coronavirus, notice that during the declared state of emergency, all regular and special meetings of the Princeton Planning Board will be held electronically via Zoom, was transmitted to the Princeton Packet, Town Topics, and The Times, and was filed with the Clerk of Princeton on April 8th, 2020, and again on January 6th, 2021. Please note, as with regular in-person meetings, members of the public will have an opportunity at a specific point in the proceedings to comment and ask questions. Please be aware, this meeting is being recorded. Those wishing to comment orally should virtually raise their hand using the button at the center of the bottom of the participant's screen, or if participating by phone, by pressing star nine. Oral comments will be taken in the order in which the hands were raised. We ask with respect that members of the public, please do your very best to limit your comments to three minutes. Inappropriate public comment containing obscenity, hate speech, or relating to matters not before the board will be muted. The raised hand feature is not the same as the thumbs up icon or the applause icon. So if you're having difficulty accessing this feature, use the Q&amp;A dialogue box to let tech support know, and they will try to assist you. So I guess now we call the roll. Carrie, were we joined by the two folks who?
Yeah. The only, Mrs. Sax is the only one that has not joined us yet.
Okay, well, go ahead and call the roll, please.
Ms. Capizoli, Mr. Cohen?
Here.
Mr. McGowan?
Here.
Mr. Oakman?
Here.
Mr. Quinn?
Here.
Ms. Sax? Mr. Tex Arney?
Here.
Mrs. Gunning? Mrs. Wilson?
Here.
And Mr. Chow?
Here.
Mr. Donald, I'm sorry.
Here.
We have a quorum, and Ms. Sax is joining us now.
Yes, I see that. Great. Good, so next we have announcements. Are there any announcements from members of the board or staff?
Well, we're doing a meeting on April 1st. We were able to get a notice in the paper, hopefully by this Monday and for the following Monday. So more details will be available tomorrow.
Well, that is a regular meeting on April 1st, correct?
Right.
Yes, and we, okay. We discussed today at our executive committee meeting the possibility, the intention actually, of having a special meeting on April 8th.
Yes.
So is that the notice that you were able to effect?
No, it was about board action that we might be doing on the 1st.
Okay, okay.
A notice on, in the paper. So I've not set up the meeting for the 8th yet.
Okay, well, this is to alert the board that we will be trying to schedule a special meeting for April 8th so that we would meet the 1st, the 8th, and the 15th of April. We just obviously have a lot in the pipeline, and it's important to not try to stuff too many things into too few agendas. Also, the Landscape Committee has a meeting coming up next week. The Master Plan Committee, we're hoping to schedule it being in the latter part of March. So the board should keep an eye out for notices about that. And I believe ZARC is intending to meet sometime soon as well. Isn't that correct, Mr. La Place, Mr. Oakman?
Yes, we'll be working on scheduling that meeting very soon.
Okay.
And I find that not everybody knows what the acronym ZARC stands for.
Voting Adjustment Review Committee. Yeah, that mystified me for some time as well.
Almost voting amendment.
Amendment, ah, well, you see, there you go.
It sounds kind of like a SWAT team for the Planning Board.
I think that's sprab.
I think it sounds like an alien invasion, but to each their own.
Planet ZARC.
Well, yes, well, they'll be meeting too. And just an announcement or sort of a heads up with regard to tonight's meeting. Of course, we have minutes, which will be quick work. We have the Tiger application, and we have Wind Development. It's very important that Wind Development be completed tonight. So what I'm thinking is that we will go straight into Tiger where Mr. Afrin can continue his cross-examination, and then we will take a quick break at 10:00, take up Wind. And if we haven't finished with Tiger, we'll come back to it. Because, you know, it's my hope that we can finish that up tonight, since this is our fourth meeting on it. Not trying to rush through anything. I think we'll have sufficient time, hope and expect to have sufficient time to finish. So if that's all right with everyone, I'm not seeing any fiercely shaking heads. Let's go right into the minutes. We have minutes from June 13th, 2019, and October 3rd, 2019. If folks have had a chance to review those, would anyone like to move the June 13th minutes?
Louise had sent through some changes to me.
Oh, I did, yes, I'm sorry.
Both sets of meeting minutes.
I did, I sent a few edits. And in the case of the second, the October minutes, it seemed to me that there might have been some text missing.
Yeah.
And so if you haven't had a chance to resolve that, then we should just, 13th minutes. Those edits were purely grammatical. Mr. Oakman, you raised your hand. Was that to move them or to ask a question?
It was just to move approval. But if there's, if we're waiting for information, then I can hold off on that.
We're waiting for information only for the October minutes, not for the June minutes, so you can move those.
I'll move approval of June minutes.
But Owen, I don't have you down as a member of the board then.
That's right.
That was Mr. Oakman, not Owen.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So moved by Mr.?
Mr. Oakman was absent that night.
Oh, okay.
So those members?
I'll move.
Mr. McGowan moved them?
I'll second.
Yeah.
I will second.
Oh, Tim, you were also not present.
What? I missed the Planning Board meeting?
I thought I was on both of them.
I leaned at the minute. She had, I was absent, I couldn't, you know.
Can you let us know who was present?
I'll name who was there. Mr. Cohen, of those members tonight, Mr. Cohen, Ms. Sax, Mr. Tex Arney, Mrs. Wilson, and that's it.
And Mr. McGowan.
Well, yes, you already made the motion.
I seconded the motion.
Thank you.
Seconded by Ms. Sax, thank you very much. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? I guess Mr. and Mr. Oakman are abstaining. Okay.
And table the meeting minutes from October. Do you need me to listen to the recording to fill in that blank?
Please.
Okay.
And if it's not substantive, you can maybe just remove that sentence fragment rather than adding. But I think it's important that it completes sentences.
Yeah, thank you.
Applications, first up from the trustees of Princeton University, continued from February 18th. This is preliminary and final major site plan for Tiger and Athletic Operations. It fits Randolph and Faculty Roads, Block 50.01, Lot 18, file number P 2020-871P. And Mr. La Place, do you want to get us started? Or Mr. Muller, or do we go?
Well, Bruce was, in his cross-examination, I would just turn it over to Bruce and let him continue.
Mr. Afrin? Are you, there you are. You're on, there you go.
I'm okay. Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
And let me, I'm sorry, let me make my screen larger. Thank you. We were, I was, we left off. I was questioning Mr. Nyquist. I assume he's here tonight. So if he's here, if he could be made available.
Yes, he is here. I saw that he, here we go.
Right here.
Nyquist, so he's been sworn already, does not need to be sworn again. Okay, go right ahead, Mr. Afrin.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Nyquist, good evening. So if you recall, we were, I was asking you some questions at the last meeting, we had not yet finished. So we'll continue on from where we were. And of course, if, at any point, you end up your answers from last week, if you omitted anything, you remember, of course, feel free to do that. I'd like to talk with you in more detail now about the functionality of the plant and how it will actually operate. You gave us a general description last week, so let me focus the questions a little bit more. You had mentioned at one point that, by the way, Ms. Wilson, sometimes my Wi-Fi in this location is a little spotty. Am I okay?
You are. Your voice garbled just a tad earlier, but you're fine right now.
Okay, great. If that happens, please let me know. I'll move then, but.
Will do.
Thank you. Thanks. Mr. Nyquist, so let me ask you a question. You mentioned last time that water will enter a building through this piping system in the summer, and the water will absorb heat. And at that, am I correct in your saying, in stating, that's what you had said last time?
The water will go into the buildings in the summer and go through air conditioning equipment and pick up heat.
Okay, now, when it does that, what does the water do next once it's absorbed heat? Where does it go? Where does it end up? Where does it deposit the water? What does it do with the heat?
So we don't deposit water, we recirculate water continuously.
That's what I meant.
Okay, so the slightly warm water, which is about 56 degrees, comes back to the plant and goes through the chiller heat pump. And the chiller heat pump pulls the heat out of the chill water.
And where does it send that heat?
So in the summer, it can, we have a annual demand, we have a heating load every single day of the year, and we have a cooling load every day of the year. So we take the heat that's been put into the chill water, and we concentrate it, and we put it into the hot water system, and we send that out to the campus. But because we're, we can be out of balance, right? In the summer, we need a lot more cooling than we need heating. We need a spot to put that heat.
Right.
Today, we waste it. We put it into a cooling tower, and we blow that heat into the atmosphere. The, one of the efficiencies of this plant is we capture that heat, and we heat the rock up in the summer.
Now, how long have you been using that cooling tower method? In which you blow off that heat?
Well, since 1961 or before.
Thank you.
The existing plant was built around 1961.
Thank you very much. Now, where will the heat be stored, so to speak? And forgive me for not using the exact technical term I'm speaking as a generalist. Where will the heat be stored when it's not needed? In other words, when you don't need all of it, instead of blowing it off in the town or somewhere? So tell us where the heat will go.
You garbled for a few seconds there.
But I think I get the gist of his question.
Is that going to? Well, but hang on, Mr. Nyquist, it isn't, because the record has to be clear.
Yeah, okay, sir.
If you'll give me, this may keep happening. My classes tell me the same thing when I teach. So I'm going to relocate, if you don't mind, to a kitchen. It'll take me just 30 seconds.
Sure. Okay.
Thank you.
Actually, while we're waiting, I have a question for you, Mr. DeGresia. I just see in the comment section that you have a court reporter here. And I'm wondering whether there is a specific timeframe during which we need to take a break for her. I've seen that happen in the past. I mean, is it important that we break between 9:15 and 9:30 or something like that?
Yes, thank you for pointing that out. It would be great if we could bring her in as a panelist, if she isn't already in. In this way, if she has an issue or a question, she could interrupt or speak out.
Certainly. Carrie, can you bring in Donna Brunk?
Yes.
As a panelist, please, thank you.
Thank you very much.
So just let us know with a little bit of advance notice if we need to take a break before 10:00, because that's when I was intending to take a break.
Sounds good.
Is Mr. Afrin back?
I do not see him.
Do not see him.
If you could turn your video off, that'd be great. Thanks.
Okay, Bruce says he's here now. Bruce, can you, there you go.
Oh, yeah, there is.
Sorry, it somehow kicked me off as I moved, so I had to get back. I apologize.
All right, you can resume. Go right ahead.
Thank you. So, Mr. Nyquist, the question I'd asked you before we interrupted was what will happen to the heat when you're storing it as opposed to blowing it off the tower? What will happen to the heat now under this proposed system?
So we actually have two methods of storing heat. One is seasonal, and one is more daily or weekly. The seasonal heat storage is in the rock formations. The GeoExchange boards are 850 feet deep. So, and they're every 20 feet. So that entire mass of rock, it's heated up all summer long. It basically acts like a battery, and it's storing energy. And a lot of it stays there until the winter. And then in the winter, we pull that heat out. We also have the capability of storing heat in the hot water storage tank. So when we have excess capacity in the daytime, we can charge that tank up, and we can use that hot water tank for morning warm-up or if we have a heat pump trip offline due to a mechanical issue. We can also use that tank when there's a lot of renewables on the grid, that kind of thing. So we have two methods of storage, one seasonal, one daily/weekly.
Is it fair to say that the storage element applies to the heat aspect of this? You're obviously not storing coal, is that correct?
Well, we are storing coal. We have a chill water storage tank.
Okay, so could you explain how that fits into the system then?
So when we have excess cooling capacity, we can charge up the chill water storage tank, and we use it just like we do the hot water tank. So when we have a really big load, we can put that tank online. Or if we have a heat pump trip, we can pull chill water out of that, especially in the summertime when it's very hot and you have very, very big loads.
Now, the water that goes into the boreholes, you know, those long U-shaped structures, does that stay in the borehole? Or does it move slowly through it and dissipate heat into the rock? Could you explain how that process works?
Yeah, it's a tube of about two inches in diameter. It's a plastic tube. It's one continuous tube, and it goes down. And there's a U-bend, which is put on at the factory. And then there's another continuous tube, plastic tube, coming to the surface. So the water goes down inside the tube, and it's warmer than the formation. And the heat then conducts into the rock. The plastic tube is surrounded by grout so that the hole is one, so around the tubes, it's one solid mass. And that's prescribed by the EP, how we do that.
Now, does the water go continuously through the tube? Or does it rest for any length of time in the borehole?
It can rest, but it's usually moving. In a day like today, we have very little cooling or heating load. So the water would not be moving much.
Okay. Now, how does the water move when it needs to move? Is there a pump system? Is that the heat pump, or is there a separate pump?
So we have water pumps, just like the Water Company has water pumps that moves the water into your house. And it just circulates the water out of the plant, into the buildings, and then back again, or out of the plant and into the GeoExchange field.
Now, you mentioned, oh, thank you. Now, you mentioned last week there's no danger of the water ever entering the soil or the rock itself. Is that because the tube is sealed and continuous?
Sorry, could you repeat that again?
Sure. You mentioned at the last meeting that there is no danger of water in the system ever leaving it and entering the soil substrate or the borehole itself. Is that because there's a continuously sealed tube?
Yeah, it's one, it's a continuously sealed tube, and it's pressure-tested before it's put online. And then it's in a grout enclosure. So it's not like it gets hit by anything.
And the tube is connected into the structure at the point of the pumping system, the heat pumps, the storage tank. Can you explain where the tube, as it runs through the borehole, connects back up into the structure?
So these tubes, they come up, and they hit a manifold system, which is a horizontal piping system. And as you connect more and more of these borehole tubes into the manifolds, they get a little bit bigger, and they eventually go to a evolve, what do they connect into, the piping system? Then the piping system is a lot bigger pipe, and that runs back to the plant.
Okay, and does it connect to, I assume there's a connection to the storage towers as well as the heat pump and the water pumps themselves, and the chillers?
Yeah, the two storage tanks out back have a supply and return pipe underground to each one.
Thank you. Now, we were speaking last week also about the Lawrence, the Lake Campus, and the Lewis Arts Center. If you recall, we were talking about those structures, or those areas. Do you recall that, those questions and answers?
I don't recall specific questions and answers now. It was a mock.
That's all right. Let me lay a foundation, just to refresh you where we were. You had mentioned that there are other kinds of exchange systems that have been operating at the university. And you said one was at the Lawrence Apartments, which is down by the golf course, I believe. Is that correct?
Correct.
And you said the Lewis Arts Center has a system of some nature in terms of exchange. Is that correct?
Correct.
And you also said the Lake Campus. Is that presently there, or is that a planned structure?
It's a potential structure.
Could you repeat that? I'm sorry.
It's a potential structure. We don't have anything over on Lake Campus. We don't have much of anything over there right now.
Okay, thank you. Now, with respect to Lawrence, I recall you saying that the system operated through individual units in each apartment. Is that correct?
Correct.
Would it be fair to say those are similar to a kind of ordinary heating unit that you might find in the closet of a condo or something similar?
They're a heat pump version of that, yes.
Right, so in other words, analogous in size and place?
Oh, yeah, definitely, yeah.
Thank you. And that's how that system operates, is that correct? Through the individual units in the apartments?
Yeah, so if you can think about apartment heating up in the summer, it needs air conditioning. So that heat pump pulls the heat out of the apartment and puts it in the water. And the water goes down into the ground, just like I mentioned earlier for the Tiger.
So in other words, each apartment has its own unit that does this, fair to say?
Exactly.
Thank you. Now, as to the Lewis Arts Center, if I recall correctly, there are four buildings there. Is that correct? We're getting the train station. I'm talking about the buildings that were built for the Arts Center.
Yeah, I look at it as a complex. So there's one common area under the, under the ground, and there's buildings to stick out from it. And in the basement of that, there is the heat pump system.
Okay, so that's in the basement, underground over there. But that serves as four parts of the structure that protrude. Is that a fair way to put it?
Yeah, very good.
Thank you. And the Lake Campus, we said there is no system at present, but that's a possible planned system for the future. Is that correct?
Yeah, the Lake Campus, as you might have seen on the Master Plan, are looking to put a lot of buildings out there. And again, we have our sustainability goals. So we have to make sure that the buildings are highly efficient. The new ones going in are going to be designed to pass standards, which is really a tight energy standard. And we're going to put in a small brown soros heat pump plant. It's proposed.
Thank you. Now, with respect to what we're talking about tonight, the application concerning the plant on Fitz Randolph, how many buildings is that expected to service, you know, once it's in operation? I realize there's ultimately interconnectivity, but what are the primary service targets of this structure?
So one of the reasons we started this process is that we're out of steaming capacity, and the university continues to put buildings up, as you well know from the planning board here. So at every new building that goes up, we need heating and cooling for it. And therefore, we had to put in capacity. And that's what the Tiger is for. So initially, it's going to go in, and it's going to support some large new buildings that are being, are going to be built. It's also going to support buildings that we're going to convert from steam to hot water. So there will be three buildings in immediate vicinity, which will be the pool, the gym, and Caldwell Field House. And then a little further away, it'll be the Jewish Center and Peyton Hall. Then we're going to interconnect it across Washington Road to the other plant. And the other plant's going to be servicing from the other direction. So it's going to be servicing buildings that we're going to convert from steam to hot water on that side of campus, which will be the three large laboratories in the west side of Washington. And then we're going to put on Theo Hall and a few other buildings in that area. And then we're going to be able to grow this facility. And because we can put more, another heat pump in there and be able to eventually connect more buildings to it.
Let me backtrack a bit. So presently, when we say interconnect, you mean that if there's a need because of a breakdown, one of the other facilities can service buildings that normally are serviced by the one that broke down? Is that a good way of describing the use of interconnectivity?
Yes. And one system will back up the other.
Backup. Now, with respect to the intended service area of the Fitz Randolph plant, not its backup potential if it's needed, but its normal service area. The present buildings will be Denunzio Pool, the Jadwin Gymnasium, the Caldwell Field House and the Center for Jewish Life. Is that correct?
And the new buildings going on that side of campus.
Hang, stay with me one moment. I just was addressing the buildings that exist now.
It's also going to serve a couple of buildings in the engineering quad area, the old engineering quad.
Some in the old engineering. Okay, great. Now, what new buildings are expected to be served by the Fitz Randolph plant?
So there is a new facility being proposed just north of the stadium for, for environmental science and for various engineering disciplines. And it'll serve that building.
Thank you. If there's anything else you recall, you know, feel free to let me know and just add that into your answers later. Now, what is presently heating and cooling Jadwin Gym, Denunzio, the Center for Jewish Life and the Caldwell Field House?
Existing plant.
Okay. And that's the steam system with air conditions?
It's just, the existing plant is providing steam to those buildings that you mentioned. And most of them have cooling from the existing chill water plant right next to the steam plant.
Thank you. Now, I'd like to talk about the question, and this may or may not be something in your area, but as the engineering executive, I thought it's far with you. Are there times when the plant will be shut down?
Yeah.
Okay. When will that occur?
So a day like today, there's a potential that we could feed the entire campus from the West Plant. There's also maintenance periods where we'll shut, shut the plant down and we'll do plant wide maintenance.
How often do you think that will happen when you do the plant wide maintenance and shut the plant?
Currently, we're doing it once a year for the steam plant. But we never do it for, we never shut the entire chill water plant down. So my guess is we'll, we'll have a plant wide maintenance outage. Maybe once every other year, once every five years, something like that.
And how long will that last?
The steam plant, we shut down for less than 24 hours.
Okay. So you're, you're analogizing it to that, roughly speaking, maybe once every two years to five years, it may shut down for a day. With the maintenance.
For maintenance, but it'll shut down for lack of load other days.
Right. We'll get to that in one moment. But for maintenance, you think one day, maybe every two years or five years?
Yeah.
Okay. As an estimate.
It's, yeah, it's a good estimate.
Thank you. Now, with regard to the burden, are you expecting it will shut down entirely at times or reduce its capacity at times? What do you think will happen in that respect?
Yes, is the answer. So there will be some times when we shut the entire plant down. And that's really what I was referring to in my previous answer. We'll shut the water circulating pumps down, we'll shut the tanks down, we'll shut the heat pumps down. We may go in and clean and maintain the entire electrical gear, that kind of thing. That's, that's going to happen every couple of years, every five years.
That, that's the maintenance shutdown, correct?
That's the maintenance shutdown. But there will be times when we're just running off the tanks. And the heat pumps will be down, the water circulating pumps will be operating. And we'll be pulling heat out of the tanks and, and putting that heat into the buildings or we'll be taking heat out.
So it's always going to operate in some respect, but some parts of it may not be needed at times of lower burden. Is that fair to say?
Yes.
Now, in terms of noise, and we've spoken a, actually in terms of noise, I need to shut something off that just went on. Louise, if you excuse me just 30 seconds.
My bet's on dishwasher.
It was actually a dehumidifier, a very
I stand, I stand corrected.
Can't stop it anyway. The interruption. This new world is a little different for cross examination and such. So thank you. Mr. Nyquist. So in terms of sound, we've been talking about the issue of, and through many witnesses, we've been talking about the issue of decibel levels and decibels reaching 40, 45, 50, then spreading and maybe being more attenuated. How often would you expect the sound levels to be active in the way we've been discussing? Is that going to be most of the time? Will it, will the noise be stopping at any point? Will the noise be generally continuous, though perhaps changing levels? Could you describe that if that's within your area of expertise?
What I'll explain is the equipment. Okay. If you need, if you need better sound answers than that, you really need to talk to our specialists than that. So the equipment will be running. It's, the key pumps are large pieces of equipment. They run for long periods of time. You do not start up a heat pump and turn it off five minutes later or even an hour later. Some, some pieces of our machinery will run all summer long. In our existing plant, there's one piece of machinery that runs all summer long. So that would be a constant kind of thing. And I'm anticipating in the summer that we might have a heat pump running all summer long continuously.
And you would go off for one second. Did you say that would be a constant? I couldn't quite hear your answer before the system stopped.
Oh, sorry. We, in the summer, we'll have a piece of equipment running continuously.
Continuously. Okay.
Yeah. And, and other equipment will come on and off as the load goes up and down. Just like a home air conditioner kicks on and kicks off as, and it does that more often when it's hot outside. Same thing happens in this kind of.
Thank you, Brian. Now, you mentioned at one point that the louvers, well, let me ask you a question. With the third round of changes that we discussed at the last meeting, the louvers are still a feature in the design of the plant. Is that correct?
Yeah, there's louvers on both sides of the plant.
Now, there was some talk about 18 inch louvers at one point. Are those still part of the plan despite the last round of changes or has that changed also?
The louvers that Ron McQuaid showed last time are what we have today. So we reduced the height of them because we could hide them behind a wall. We didn't have to put the architectural screen on them. So we got more free area. But the exact height, I don't know the exact height.
Okay. But the, the louvers are still a feature of the design.
Oh, yes.
Now, there was a comment made, the louvers may be closed during a blizzard. Is that, could you explain? I think I know the reason, but perhaps you could just explain why that might be the case.
Yeah, I'm not sure if I said a blizzard, but when it gets cold out, we don't want to pull cold air into a space with a lot of water in it. The reason the louvers are there are to cool off machinery when it gets hot in the summer. So if you can imagine a large heat pump, it's got a big motor on it. That puts out heat into the space and so do the motors from the pumps. In the summer, when it's really hot, that space could be unbearable. So we have to ventilate it. And to ventilate it, we do that with air. So we would open these louvers. So it's, it's like opening a window. Except these are sound rated louvers. So we'll open those, they'll allow air in and we'll crawl the air in using the fan and we'll exhaust it up.
Okay. So basically they open up to release heat that builds up. Is that a fair description of their function?
They open up to allow outside air into the plant to release heat.
Are the louvers a noise control feature or are they really there solely for the release of heat?
The louvers are there to crawl in outside air so we can get rid of heat. And they're designed to be a really good, from a sound point of view, so that, so that the sound doesn't go back through them. So minimal sound is bad for them.
When they're closed, you mean?
Now, now, when they're open, they deaden the sand, the sound.
Okay. So they have an effect on
So if you just had a hole in the wall, like a window, right? A truck goes by, you hear that really well. But if you have a louver in the wall that's acoustically rated, it'll deaden a lot of that sound from that truck. And that's why we're using that type of louver.
Okay. So thanks. So the louvers have a dual function. They have an acoustical impact as well as they dissipate in the release of heat.
Their, their function is to allow air into the plant that can be used to cool the plant. And we bought a really good louver so to minimize the sound.
Okay, thank you. Are those the 18 inch louvers that were referenced at one point?
I don't remember the height of the louver.
Okay. I, I understood the 18 inches was a thickness of a louver. Do you know anything about that particular aspect of the design?
You, you would have to talk to Julie. I don't know the details of the louver design.
That's fine. Thank you. There was discussion brought out by members of the community about an earlier location for this plant next to Denunzio Pool. Do you recall that general discussion?
I do.
Yes. And Mr. McCoy did say that it was in the 2017 master plan, but that was intended to be flexible. And there's a change now in the location of the plant. Do you recall that testimony?
I do.
And the new location instead of Denunzio is the location we're discussing here on Fitz Randolph. Is that right?
Correct.
Now, what discussions took place within the university as to the reasons for changing the location of the geo exchange plant? From Denunzio to the location on Fitz Randolph that we are now discussing?
So I have to, here, you're, you're assuming facts that aren't true. There was no change of location.
I think that it would be appropriate if witnesses would testify, not Mr. DeGrasse and I.
And you need to
I really think this speaking objection is designed to give an answer to a witness. It is inappropriate and it shouldn't happen. Period.
Sorry Bruce, but you can't make up facts. It was located in another area. There's only
Wilson, I'm going to insist that Mr. DeGrasse not make speaking objections that supply what he thinks are answers that should be stated. That's the effect of this objection.
I'm just objecting to your question. You could
Yeah, I think the objection is, is valid, is proper. He's indicating there's no foundation for the question.
Yep.
That, well, then there is a foundation for the question. It was very clearly brought out through members of the community and through Mr. McCoy's own answers, that this was chosen originally to be at the Denunzio Pool area. And it's reflected in the master plan that way. And Mr. McCoy very plainly said in his understanding, the master plan was flexible and there are changes. And he said there was a change in the prioritization of use of that site. There's a foundation for the question.
Okay, that's, that's funny. That's just, that was Mr. DeGrasse's point of view. You've laid, you've articulated what the foundation is.
Okay. Well, thank you, Jerry. I thank you. I'll go further. So Mr. Nyquist, what discussions took place within the university as to changing the location of the plant from the site next to Denunzio Pool to the present site on Fitz Randolph that we are discussing tonight?
Mr. Affrin, you have to understand, you're talking to the university engineer. Okay, I'm the technical guy. The, the locations for various buildings are not my purview. So the, the master plan showed a general location for this. And the only conversations that a technical person had, me, was, you know, could it be located in another spot? And my answer was yes. And, and, you know, we're going back years. So that's, that's the general, what I remember of it. But I don't cite buildings.
I simply asked you what discussions took place. Now, and I only asked you answer as to your knowledge.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
And movement, the change in location is, is within reason is just added pipe.
Is just what? I'm sorry.
We, we had a, had a little bit longer chill water and hot water pipe.
Do you recall how much longer, the longer within the building or longer on the ground?
Basically, the distance from where it was shown in the master plan to where it's shown today.
Do you recall that, what that distance is? I'm just asking if you know.
It's the distance between Denunzio Pool and the location today. I don't know how far that is, a couple hundred yards.
Well, we can check the scale. That's fine. Thank you. Now, aside from what you said, my question was really a little broader. What discussions took place at the university as to reasons for changing the location of the plant?
So the architect's office has meetings constantly and they're the, the people that set the location of the buildings. I'm not in all those meetings. I don't really know.
Do you have any, now, did you hear any reasons raised by anyone in this process as to why the location was going to be changed or could be changed or should be changed?
Not that I remember now.
Did you see any memorandum outlining such subjects?
Yours, I don't remember any.
Do you remember when the, well, the master plan is dated 2017. Do you recall when the decision to make the change took place?
So we hired an engineer to design the, the new plant. I'm guessing it was around 17 or 28, 2017 or 2018. So the decision must have been made back then.
Okay. But other than that, do you have any recollection sitting here today?
No.
If for the moment, that's all I have for Mr. Nyquist. Obviously, other witnesses might prompt some additional questions, but that's all I had from Mr. Nyquist. Thank you very much, Mr. Nyquist.
You're welcome.
Gary, I assume we're going to follow the usual practice or Louise rather also, that any redirect by this, by the, I almost said by the state, by Princeton University or any questions from the board. We'll wait till all the process done. Is that how we're proceeding?
Yeah, I think that's the best way to handle that, Louise. Do you agree?
Yep. That sounds good. Mr. Affrin, do you, do you know how many, I don't mean to ask an inappropriate question. I'm asking completely out of curiosity. So I hope it's not out of bounds. But how many cross examinations you intend to conduct this evening?
Well, it's not out of bounds at all. Judges always ask that. So I believe I have additional questions for Mr. McCoy and Ms. Fisher. Very briefly for Mr. Bridger. And possibly depending on Ms. Fisher's answers, I don't know if she's here, Ms. Pierceall.
Okay.
Maybe Chris could tell us. I don't know. Is Ms. Pierceall here tonight?
Maybe Carrie can tell us. Carrie, can you tell us whether Ms. Pierceall is here?
She's not a witness in this case.
Oh, excuse me. I'm sorry.
I thought she had spoken on this case. She did not. You didn't know.
Yeah, no, she is not. She was not witness.
That's fine.
Okay.
I think Ms. Fisher will cover those areas.
Who, who would you like to, to question next?
I think it would make sense logically to speak with Mr. McCoy at this point.
Okay. Mr. Muller, does Mr. McCoy need to be sworn again?
Oh.
Okay. All right, Mr. Affrin.
Thank you. Is Mr. McCoy visible?
Yep.
Yep.
Yes, sir, he is. Well, he's on my screen.
Hang on. If Mr. McCoy could speak, maybe he'll pop up on mine when he does.
Right here.
There you are. Thank you. That works. Great. Good evening, Mr. McCoy.
Good evening.
Could you tell us a general or specific description of your responsibilities as university architect?
I oversee planning and architectural design.
And are you the highest executive authority with respect to those fields at the university?
No, I report to the, uh, I have expertise, it's my my portfolio. But I have I report to the vice president for facilities, who reports to the executive vice president of the university.
Okay, so who do you report to directly? The name of that person?
Q Wong, W H A N G.
What role have you played in the design, location or planning with respect to the project proposed for Fitz Randolph? Mainly the Geo Exchange Plant?
I was involved in the campus plan. I was involved in the, um, subsequent master plan for the East Campus. I was involved in the architect selection. And I was involved in guiding the design.
Now, when you say the campus plan and the master plan for the East Campus, we've heard testimony about the 2017 master plan that situated this project next to Denunzio Pool. Are either of those documents the same as that document?
The 2017 campus plan, it's not a master plan. That's very specifically the subtitle of it, calls it a framework plan. That's the that's the that's probably the the document that you and the neighbors have referred to.
Okay, and the master plan for the East Campus, is that a different document?
That's a subsequent planning effort that specifically located, uh, the projects. The campus plan did not specifically locate projects.
Well, how do you define specifically locating?
After you do the analysis of what the project needs, which you cannot do in a in the timeframe of a of a campus framework plan, you have a specific, a secondary planning effort that that goes into the details of the projects and determines the best site.
And if the campus plan placed a structure at a given location on a schematic drawing, would that constitute selection of a site?
No.
Okay.
Campus plan says that it, um, it specifically says in President I's groups in introduction to the campus plan that it indicates where facilities might be located. So it was never specific. It's it's one, it's one of many possibilities.
Now, that plan was first started in 2014 and was completed and released in 2017. Is that correct?
That's right.
So it was a three year effort. Were you involved in that?
Yes, I oversaw the effort.
How many how many staff people were involved in that effort? And professionals?
Uh, probably over 100 professionals and three or four, about probably half a dozen staff.
When you say professionals, do you mean professionals within the university or outside?
Consulting professionals.
In other words, people retained from the outside?
Yes.
And what level staff, aside from yourself, comprise those half a dozen people?
We had two, uh, with the associate university architect by office. We had a, uh, another assistant university architect by office. And we had some project managers from the Office of Capital Projects, which is a kind of sister organization.
Who made the decision to place this project next to Denunzio Pool in the campus plan?
Uh, the decision was not made to locate it next to Denunzio Pool. It was identified as a possible location that might be might be located. And that came out of the campus plan.
Well, there's a drawing that shows buildings on the campus.
It's true.
Correct. And among those drawings is a drawing that plainly shows a schematic or image of the Geo Exchange Plant next to Denunzio Pool. Would you agree with that?
Yes.
So someone made a decision to publish that drawing as part of the campus plan. Isn't that correct?
Along with the statement that said this might be a possible location.
I've heard that and I do understand. And I've read the instruction as well.
Yes.
But someone made a decision to publish that drawing with the building located at that place. Isn't that correct?
That's right.
And whose decision was that?
That was a, we had a governance process that had an executive committee that had a, um, maybe 12 or 15 senior administrators.
Were you on that?
Yes.
Was the president?
Yes.
Was the executive vice president?
Yes.
Was, uh, either Q Wong or whoever occupied that position at that time on that committee?
Yes.
And what other professionals were on that committee?
You know, the provost was on that committee. The, um, assistant vice president for, um, uh, Office of Capital Projects was on the committee. I think we had, um, the head of advancement on the committee. So people like that. I don't have a full roster in front of me. It's in the campus plan.
Thank you. I just asked to the best of your recollection.
Yep, yep.
Now, um, Ms. Wilson, if I wanted to share the screen to offer and exhibit, how can I do that?
Carrie, can you?
First, I want to object. I have not seen it. It wasn't posted three days before as required, and I don't know what he's talking about. I also object that this is a completely irrelevant area covering a internal document that has no bearing on municipal zoning ordinance. There's nothing that requires an institution to locate anything pursuant to a master plan. The building could be located anywhere on campus. This is a complete waste of time, Bruce.
Well, I'm glad to be addressed directly when you say it's a waste of time. Thank you. But we should direct our comments to Louise. But, uh, it is relevant because this is not a permitted as a right project. The university has to meet a burden of showing it's an accessory use that's permitted. And the definition of that is that which is customarily incidental to one of the permitted uses. And therefore, questions as to where it was situated, where it was moved from, why, are all relevant to that question. The university does not have a permitted right to build this. It must meet a burden of showing it is customarily incidental to uses in the zone. And any question dealing with movement of this site, of this project from one place on the campus to another certainly bears on the question. Because why it was moved certainly may be relevant to that subject. So it is relevant and I'd like to proceed.
It's not. Do we want to, um, talk about your your claim about jurisdiction? Is that is it an appropriate time to get into that so we can get on with something that's relevant to the application?
I think, Ms. Wilson, these issues and comments made are not quite right. Secondly, we agreed long ago in this process, we're going to hear all the evidence and then all the arguments merged together. Can I go on, please?
Well, this.
The question was, how do we share?
Weren't you in sort of invoking the the, um, jurisdiction question? I guess I would ask Mr. Muller to unmute yourself so that you can weigh in here.
My point is.
Jared, but, um.
It goes to the merits of the whole issue. They can't get this approved unless they meet a burden of demonstrating it's an accessory use. So it's not, yes, of course jurisdiction applies if the zoning code doesn't allow.
And we and we have put, excuse me.
I'm sorry. Of course jurisdiction is one concept within this. If it's not within the permitted uses, there may be no jurisdiction. But in any event, the, hang on, please. We've been through this, you know, this merges right in with the merits. If they can't meet a burden of showing this is customarily incidental to one of the permitted uses, then they can't get approval. And if it's approved, it's a significant legal issue in court. So the question.
And I, my understanding is that Mr. de Grazia was suggesting that we take up, take the this opportunity to address the issue of jurisdiction. And since we are to.
Yes.
It's not, it's not relevant right yet because we need the evidence out. That's the whole point.
The idea initially was that Bruce would make his jurisdictional argument after he finished his cross examination. I think that's still a good way.
Okay, all right.
I, I want, yeah, let me just mean more broadly. It's it's, yes, it relates to jurisdiction as a legal matter, but it also relates directly to the merits. Okay, but they can't get approval unless they can meet a burden of showing it's an accessory use. So it goes to the merits of the plan as well. That's why when we talked, we're going to do the evidence. And then when we argue the case, we raise these issues.
Okay, but for the rest.
Mr. de Grazia?
Say, Madam Chair, that accessory use, if he's claiming that that is something we have to talk about, has nothing to do where it's located on the lot. It's whether it's accessory or not. It's all on the same lot. It's all serving the same buildings. It has nothing to.
Yeah.
With an internal document that the university has put together as part of its planning process. And this complete, this whole questioning is irrelevant to the application. It doesn't matter how they got there in terms of planning. This is the location. This is where it's proposed. And if he wants to make an argument that it's not a permitted use where it's proposed, that's fine. But there's, it's not a master plan document he's talking about from the municipality or zoning ordinance. He's talking about an in an internal document that helps plan. And it's completely irrelevant to the issue.
It's not irrelevant at all, and I really don't need to give all my reasons in front of the witness I'm cross examining as to why I'm asking questions. Mr. de Grazia is hoping that I will lay out an entire theory so Mr. McCoy can plan his answers accordingly. It really is improper to do this. Let me just continue to do my job.
Your statement.
Okay, let 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 me just jump in. I I do do think the 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 theory supporting why this is relevant, that Bruce has articulated, is a bit tenuous. But I think there's enough there that he should be allowed to continue with it. And and Mr. de Grazia's objection is duly noted.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So what I'd like to, I'm sorry.
Well, uh, going back to Carrie, Carrie, can you give Mr. Affrin?
All panelists have the opportunity to share their screen.
Share your screen. Okay, so you should be able to do that, Bruce.
Okay, so let me see if I can do that.
And I would ask in advance that you that you share it for, that when you're when you're done talking about it, we will go back to gallery view and, you know, not share anymore so that folks can see everybody else. And we don't keep looking at an image.
Maybe maybe it would be best to do this at the end because, um, you know, it's a matter of just, we've already talked about the plan. And I think it's a matter of just keeping it in the record and making sure it's an exhibit. So, um, my plan was to introduce the campus plan that we just spoke to and an excerpt of it. But maybe we can do that towards the end and just make an exhibit then rather than using time. Because I'm not sure I'm going to be able to.
Okay.
This correctly.
So you'll continue to question Mr. McCoy?
Yes, I hope I don't. Okay, yes. So we'll introduce that as an objective exhibit later, just to be clear about it.
Okay.
So, Mr. McCoy, when was the decision made to change the proposed location of this plant from next to the Denunzio Pool to the current site at Fitz Randolph?
Mr. McCoy, you're on mute.
In the, uh, planning phase that followed the master plan, that was the opportunity where we, um, decided to look at, um, the location of a variety of facilities on the East Campus. So again, it wasn't a change. It was the first time that we took a deep dive and understood all of the detailed requirements. And, um, that that phase probably was in, uh, 2018.
I just was asking for a rough approximation. So somehow 2018.
Yeah.
Now, who participated in making that decision?
There was a executive, uh, committee as part of the of the East Campus planning effort. It had, it had myself, the, uh, vice president for facilities, the executive vice president of the university, the, uh, uh, vice president of campus life, uh, head of athletics, um, and some other people.
Now, were you part of the discussions about locating this at Fitz Randolph?
Yes.
Is it fair to say you were part of all of those discussions?
Yes.
Now, what discussions took place within the university about changing the proposed location from Denunzio Pool to the present site at Fitz Randolph?
This is going to get repetitive, but Denunzio was not the proposed location. It was identified as one of several, as a possible location where it might be located. And then, um, we, uh, so the question again is, if you could repeat the question.
Well, I I'd appreciate if you'd not continue to make that predicate comment. I know you, your position is there was no permanent decision to put it at Denunzio. Let me just ask the direct question. Please answer that. When was the decision made to change the proposed location from next to Denunzio Pool to the present site at Fitz Randolph? I'm sorry, strike that. I asked that. What were the discussions at the university as to the reasons for changing the location of this proposed plant from next to Denunzio Pool to the present location at Fitz Randolph?
It wasn't a change. If you're going to continue to say it was a change, I'll just continue to remind you that it wasn't a change.
You've made that.
It was, it was a fresh start that is typical in a planning effort. And it, uh, as the campus plan said, um, it was a response to changing needs. We, uh, when the campus plan was developed, we had not determined where the soccer practice facility would go. And so then, when we began to tackle this, the East Campus, we decided to locate the soccer practice field, uh, near the Denunzio Landing, which greatly reduced the capacity, the ability to, um, locate the, uh, Tiger Plant there. And also, we we began to understand more functionally what the Tiger Facility needed to have as a support facility.
Mr. Nyquist said it could work just as easily at the Denunzio site, didn't he?
He did.
Okay.
He did not offer a campus planning perspective, though. For a campus planning perspective, it would not have worked.
And I'm asking you to describe all of the reasons that were discussed at the university as to why it would not have worked.
The soccer field took up too much of the site. There was no site left for the facility.
Excuse me, but isn't the Denunzio site where, strike that. Could you explain that answer more fully? What do you mean by saying the soccer facility?
We located a soccer practice.
Mr. McCoy, let me finish the question. What do you mean by saying the soccer facility took up too much of the site?
In the campus plan, in the framework plan, we did not have a practice soccer facility on the East Campus. Then, when we took up the East Campus planning effort, we decided to add the soccer practice facility to the East Campus. It was located near the Denunzio Landing, greatly reducing the the amount of land that we could have at the Denunzio Landing.
Is there any facility on the site of the Denunzio site where this was going to be proposed originally?
Is there land there, is what you're asking?
I'm asking, let me rephrase the question. What is it about the soccer practice? We'll strike that. When you say soccer practice facility, what do you mean? Is it a field?
Soccer practice field, yes.
So the field is not on the place where this was cited in the mass, in the campus plan, is it?
Correct. The campus plan did not, did not have a solution for where a soccer practice field would go.
No, I'm sorry, that you misunderstood my question. The soccer practice field is not on the site in the campus plan where the Geo Exchange Plant was cited in 2017, is it?
It's, it it begins to, begins to impede on that site, yes, on.
What do you mean by it begins to impede?
I'd say the western edge of the soccer practice field eats into the site that we had anticipated. That we had, that was identified in the in the master, in the campus plan.
What do you mean you would say it does? Does the soccer field occupy the land where the Geo Exchange Plant would have been in the campus plan?
Um, I don't have that information. Like, I can't tell you the particular boundaries.
What other reasons were discussed at the university for changing the location of the site from the Denunzio area to where it is now?
I think that was the primary reason of the limited site that resulted from the location of the soccer practice field.
Can I have one moment, please, Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
I'm just checking your document, I'll be one moment. I'm sorry. Mr. McCoy, what is the name of the soccer fields? The practice soccer field?
The new practice soccer field that is recently approved does not have a name.
Now, there is a sidewalk, is there not, running from Fitzrandall past Denunzio Pool, is it towards Caldwell Fieldhouse, isn't there?
Yes.
And the soccer field is on one side of that sidewalk, isn't it?
It's on the south side of that of that east west sidewalk, that's what you're talking about.
And it does not extend over the sidewalk, does it?
No, to the north, no.
And the Denunzio, the geothermal site would have been on the other side of that sidewalk. Isn't that correct?
That's correct.
So the geothermal site would not have impeded on the soccer fields at all since they're divided by a walkway, isn't that correct?
The bore fields, correct, would not, yes.
I'm sorry, the geothermal plant as cited in the campus plan next to Denunzio Pool would not have impeded on the soccer field since there's a walkway between them, isn't that correct?
The it's more it's a little bit more complex than that. This the in the campus plan, we have also imagined another administrative building co-located with the Tiger Facility.
That's that building that would wrap around the Tiger, correct?
That's right, that's right.
Right, so and that still would be on the other side of that walkway, wouldn't it?
It would be it it would be on the west side of that walkway. Is that what you're talking about? I'm not sure, without looking at a drawing, I'm not sure what what walkways you're talking about. You first said it was an east west walkway, now you're talking about a north south walkway.
I only spoke about the walkway from Fitzrandall through to Caldwell Fieldhouse.
That's an east west walkway.
Okay, and on one side of it is the current soccer practice field, correct?
Correct.
And on the other side of it is the site where the campus plan situated the geothermal plant and that other facility that wrapped around, correct?
No, that's that would be to the west, so you'd have to talk about a north south sidewalk.
Let me jump in for a moment. I mean, this is really marginal relevance at best.
It's not margin relevance, Jerry. They didn't want to put the geothermal plant next to where students would play soccer. That demonstrates its unsuitability on a campus, which relates directly to the question of whether it is customarily incidental. It's not marginally relevant at all.
Okay, you can continue. I'd like you to wrap it up as soon as you can on this point.
Well, it's a major point, and I don't think I should be rushed.
I'm not asking you to rush, I'm just asking you to get through it as soon as you can.
Well, let me try sharing the screen at this point, all right? Because this may help resolve the issue with Mr. McCoy and I in terms of the locations. So I'm going to hit the share button, and I hope I can get this up. Did that come up?
No, just a small.
No, just a a sliver of it. That looks like the top of your.
Oh, I see, I'm sorry, is it there now?
Yes.
Okay, but now I can't see it. Okay, can you all see that now? Is it fully visible?
Well, I'm not sure how much you want to be visible. What's visible is Lake Carney at the bottom Carnegie at the bottom of the screen.
Okay, how about? Oh, I see the problem. Hang on a moment, please. I had enlarged it. Is that fully visible?
Uh, yes.
Okay, so we have Lake Carnegie at the bottom. We have a green field sort of at the top, and we have some orange buildings in the middle. Do you all see that?
Yes.
Okay. Now, Mr. McCoy, you can see that, correct?
Yes.
You also see my cursor moving? Is that visible?
Yes.
Now, right here, where I'm circling right now, the rectangular building and two round cylindrical objects, correct?
Correct.
The campus plan in two thousand seventeen that featured the site at that point in the plan of the geothermal plant, correct?
Yes.
Okay, now, right here, I'm now moving my cursor in an L shape. Is that that additional administrative building that would wrap around the geothermal plant?
Office uses.
Yeah, that wrap, that's the building that wraps around.
Yes, yes.
So right here, the rectangular building with the towers is the geothermal GeoExchange Plant. And right in front of it is that wraparound office building.
That's right, that's right.
Now, I'm pointing at the moment to Finney J. Campbell Fields. Do you see that?
I do.
Where in relation to that are the soccer practice fields?
Okay, I'm going to hold on. Well, let's see. If you the western edge of the soccer practice field goes about right through the middle of what was shown as the Tiger Facility.
So.
Then the soccer fact practice field sits, basically sits on top of the tanks that are shown there. And the western edge of the soccer facility goes through the middle of what's shown there as the Tiger Facility. Emphasizing the point I made earlier that it took up too much of the site.
Okay, so that's what so you're saying, let me, do you see this larger rectangular square square?
I do, I do.
What is that presently today?
That is the it's it's a it's a construction site for the east campus parking garage.
Okay, now, perhaps I'm misunderstanding. You're saying the where is the soccer field? On which side? Here?
Soccer field sits on the west side of the of the garage, immediately on the west side of the garage. And it it's span it can and it spans over to the middle of the Tiger Facility, sitting on a site that the Tiger Facility.
Are you saying it goes like this? Correct.
Yeah, yeah, a little further, yeah, yeah, sits right there.
And that's a practice facility?
Yes.
And all that is is a field, correct?
Yes.
Okay, now, this is the flyway here?
We call it the flyover.
Flyover, that's not built yet, obviously, that's something. Okay, that's planned, that would be a pedestrian bridge.
Correct.
From what may be the lake campus, okay.
Correct.
So you're saying that the practice soccer field is here?
Yes, yes.
And you decided to put a soccer field there?
Yes.
And you didn't want the, okay, why did you decide to put that practice soccer field there rather than, say, where the geothermal plant is going to be located on Fitzrandall now?
Um, several reasons. It's in in this location, it's immediately adjacent and with a safe connection to the soccer stadium, which is that masked area to the northeast of the of what's shown here is the Tiger Facility. So there's a lot of functional connectivity required from the soccer stadium to the soccer practice here.
Were you saying the soccer stadium is on here?
Okay, so if you if you go to the northeast corner of the office use that we were just talking about?
Right here.
Yeah, and go and then go across to go to your north and then further to the east. Yes, right in that whole that whole rectangle, well, very big rectangle, is where the soccer stadium is.
And the Fitzrandall site for the plant is going to be right over here, correct?
It's sitting where the word Fitzrandall Road is in the diagram.
Right. So actually, the practice soccer field, if it was here.
It wouldn't fit.
The plant would be just in the same position as soccer stadium as this is here, correct?
It wouldn't fit. The land is not big enough on Fitzrandall Road, and it would it would go into the east regional basin. And it would it would be less quiet than the Tiger Facility.
Okay, so it would be less quiet than the Tiger Facility?
Yes.
A soccer practice field would be less quiet than a industrial plant? Is that what you're saying?
I disagree with it. It's not an industrial plant, but we've demonstrated how quiet it is. And soccer players on a pitch make more noise.
So you're saying you put the plant there in part because it's less noisy than soccer players?
No, I didn't say that. I said the reason is that land is not sufficient, there's not enough land. I was just pointing out that it would be quieter.
So you're saying at some point, a decision was made to put the practice soccer field at this site where the geothermal plant was once cited and move the plant from here over to here?
Geothermal plant was not cited, that was located, that was identified as a possible location.
When I say cited, I mean pictured and depicted in the campus plan. Is that?
It was depicted there, yes.
Thank you, that's what I mean when I say cited, okay. Now, were any other reasons discussed? Well, where was the soccer practice field before that?
We hadn't located it.
There had never been any practice field?
Oh, oh, in it it currently exists over on the west side of Washington Road, adjacent to the current soccer varsity practice or the previous soccer practice soccer stadium, which was removed for the new residential colleges. So we moved the soccer soccer stadium over to this area. But when we published the campus plan, we had not finalized the decision about the soccer practice field.
Are there any other reasons that were discussed? Well, strike that question. Let me clarify for one thing. Does the soccer practice field exist right now?
It does, on the other side of Washington Road.
No, no, I'm so sorry. Does the soccer practice field where we're speaking at Denunzio exist now, or is that a planned proposal?
It's been recently permitted, so it's it's getting ready for construction.
Okay, so I just want to be clear, it doesn't presently impede on that site, but you've chosen to locate it there.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Now, were there any other reasons discussed at the university for changing the sighting of the plant from the Denunzio area to the present area?
I I have to object. Bruce, you continue to say change the location, and there's been testimony over and over again. There was no change of location. It was only proposed on one site, which is the application before you.
I think we understand this issue, and Mr. McCoy and I reached an understanding. When I say cited, I'm referring to the depiction in the campus plan. I think we all understand the applicant's position that this was not a definite plan. And I'm referring to the change in the sighting of it from the campus plan depiction to the present proposal. We don't need to keep going around and around on that, do we? Now, Mr. McCoy, my question stands.
Can you repeat the question?
Yes, I will. What other reasons of any nature were discussed at the university for changing the location or sighting of the geothermal plant from the sighting pictured in the campus plan to the proposal now at Fitzrandall?
I would say that the other reason was, well, there was also recognition that the in addition to the site being too small, from a campus planning perspective, there was an op, it was it was decided that there could be an opportunity for something else that would serve the mission of the university.
Is that what you meant at the last meeting when you spoke of? Excuse me, I meant not at the last meeting, but one of the prior meetings, when you spoke of a higher prioritization.
Correct.
To that site?
That's correct.
And what higher priorities have been discussed for that site?
We haven't had specific discussions.
Well, have there been any discussions about other projects that would have a higher priority at that site?
No, it's common in campus planning to reserve sites that are that are sort of gateway sites such as this for high priorities without knowing what those priorities might be.
Why would it not be appropriate to put this type of plant at a gateway site?
Because there's no room left for the for the gateway plant and the rapid wraparound administrative use. Since we wanted to have an active site, we want to have people there populated. The Tiger Facility has no people.
And so, when you say you wanted to have this site active and populated with people, you didn't want these buildings there, you wanted some other kind of use, is that fair to say?
A building with people.
So you wanted a building that would be used by people on campus as opposed to a plant that stands essentially empty?
Yes.
Thank you. Other than what you've testified to this discussion at the university, changing the sighting of the site to Fitzrandall?
You broke up there, I'm sorry, could you repeat the question?
Oh, I'm sorry, I should ask Ms. Wilson, am I coming across clearly normally?
That the beginning of that question was garbled, otherwise you.
Okay, thank you. Excuse me. Other than what you've testified to this evening or any other day, were there any other reasons discussed at the university for changing the sighting from the Denunzio location area in the campus plan to the present location?
No.
And what other locations, other than the Fitzrandall location, were considered for placing this structure, this GeoExchange Plant?
I actually don't recall what are the specific sites we've studied.
What other sites study?
I don't recall.
Before I forget, then, I think that it would be useful just to introduce the document on the screen as Objectors Exhibit One. Should we call that O one?
Yes, I'm not.
Yes.
Yes.
Sorry.
Okay, thank you. So I.
And Bruce, just identify exactly what it is. It's a page from the.
Yes, this is a, we'll we'll introduce the whole master plan anyway, not master campus plan, but to save time. At this point, this is a a page, it is an excerpt from the Campus two thousand seventeen Plan. Mr. McCoy referred to it as the framework plan, but it's the same plan we've been talking about. And this is a page detailing a portion of the campus where there was a depiction of the wraparound office building and the GeoExchange Plant. And it is picturing that next to the Denunzio Pool that is depicted also.
But O one is going to be the entire plan.
Uh, yeah, but we'll make the whole plan O one, and this can be O one A. Does that work?
Okay, sure. What page is that, is that a page number?
I I it doesn't have page numbers on the plan, but when the PDF is loaded, it will have a PDF number. But this is figure three dash one four. But this is figure three dash one four.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Actually, page seventy-two of the master, of the campus plan.
Thank you, I didn't have mine up in front of me. Okay, I think I can take that down now, and, um, how do I?
Thank you.
By just stopping share, I assume?
Yes.
Okay. That's good. Okay, thank you.
Do you have additional questions for Mr. McCoy, Mr. Affron?
Yes, I was just checking off questions I'd asked. Ms. McCoy, there was discussion at, in, in connection with some of the community statements about the construction schedule, do you recall generally that subject being brought up?
Uh, yes.
I just want to clarify some things because, um, you spoke both about the borehole projects and drilling and the geo exchange plant construction. Could you explain, when will the borehole drilling continue through? When will that end, as expected at this point?
Expected through October of twenty twenty-one.
Now, there was an initial permit applicant, not initial, but among the permit applications, there was an application for, I believe, forty-four boreholes roughly at the Fitz Randolph site, is that correct?
Yes.
Now, are those boreholes still going to be drilled or is that being dropped for any reason? What is your expectation in that regard?
We're going to drop, uh, the plan to build those in this capital plan, which goes through twenty thirty.
So for the time being, they're dropped. Now, are they expected, I know you don't know what's going to happen in eleven years, but are they expected to be drilled at some point?
We, well, under the Tiger facility, once we, um, build the Tiger facility, we would not be able to build the, the boreholes underneath it. So once, so they would not, under the Tiger facility, they would not be built.
Okay, are there some outside of that among the forty-four or?
There were some, there were some that were located north of the Tiger facility. Um, and we're going to, um, work with the, uh, staff to amend the approval for that and also drop, uh, drop them from that, from that approved, approved, uh, plan.
So for the time being, as far as you know, those will not be drilled?
Correct.
Now, when will the geo exchange plant construction begin on the schedule that you're anticipating?
If all goes well, uh, we would begin the construction in May of twenty twenty-one and complete in February of twenty twenty-three.
If all goes well, you mean in terms of planning permission and things like that?
Yes, if we're not still having planning board hearings.
Never knows that. But, uh, okay, thank you. So, and I'm sorry, I didn't hear the date for completion, when did you?
February of twenty twenty-three.
Twenty-three?
Yes.
Okay, so approximately, uh, twenty months, um, approximately twenty months.
Approximately.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Wilson, that covered some subject areas. I really hate to make a personal request, I need a three-minute break. I would not be able to continue. Okay.
Well, um, let's all take a three-minute break, it's a strict three minutes. See you in three.
Thank you.
Going to all do, uh, three minutes of yoga.
That'll be nine, nine oh eight.
Nine oh eight, thank you. I'm seeing nine oh eight on my clock.
Oh, it's the yoga, Louise.
It was mostly up and down the stairs. Gets the, gets the heart going a little faster than child's pose.
It is in fact nine zero, nine oh eight.
Yes, it is. Mr. Affron, are you back? For the benefit of, um, folks who are watching as attendees, there are a total of ninety-five people, signed in and um, and a combination of participating and observing. Okay, Mr. Affron, um, let's carry on.
Thank you. Thank you for the break. There has been discussion, Mr. McCoy, about you now. And many parents spoke in the community portion of the meeting. Who owns the land on which you now is situated?
Princeton University.
And who owns the building?
Princeton University.
Okay. And who built the building?
Princeton University.
And who financed the building?
Princeton University.
Thank you. Was there any sort of child health expert or anyone in any allied field consulted by the university or any of its retained consultants? In connection with the decision to propose the geo exchange plant at the Fitz Randolph location?
Uh, since there wasn't a noise issue, there was, there was no, no consultant consulted.
Thank you. Could you describe the total number of boreholes that are being drilled in connection with the geo exchange plant proposed for Fitz Randolph? Outside of the forty-four, which we've talked about?
Um, we have, um, estimated about, um, well, about six hundred and, uh, fifteen?
Okay, I'm only asking for your best understanding, is that the, is that the understanding at this point in the?
Yes, yes, that, that's, that's about six hundred and fifteen west of Fitz Randolph.
And those, are those all the eight hundred approximate depth holes?
Uh, yes, yes, more or less eight hundred and fifty feet.
Eight fifty, right. And what is the width of the actual excavation of the hole?
I do not know exactly how big the drill bit is.
Okay, is it, okay, that's fine. You have an approximation in your understanding?
I could only make a, make a guess, so, you know, it's an order of eighteen inches or something like that, but it's a total guess. You'd have to get Tom Nyquist back to get the details.
We'll follow up with Tom, thank you. Now, at present, what will be the power source for the plant in terms of sustainable sources? Conventional electricity, electricity from the grid, can you describe that?
That's another Tom Nyquist question.
Okay, thank you. I think I'm just about concluding with Mr. McCoy for now, I'm just checking my notes, please, Ms. Wilson.
Okay.
Okay, that, that concludes what I need from Mr. McCoy at the moment, but we might have to go back to him at some point.
Okay, do you want to pose those quick questions to Mr. Nyquist now, or do you want to?
Yeah, we might as well do that so the record is unified.
I see his name on my screen, Mr. Nyquist, can you turn on your camera and unmute? Did you hear the questions that, that Mr. McCoy punted your way?
The, the one question was the diameter of the borehole?
Yes, sir.
That's correct.
It's eight inches.
Thank you very much. And is that, is that consistent for all six fifteen approximately?
Yeah, everything's the same.
Okay, and they're all approximately eight hundred and fifty feet in depth?
Eight hundred and fifty feet.
Okay, thank you very much.
And there was another.
One other question, Mr. Affron?
No, that was it for Mr. Nyquist.
There was a question on the power source?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, um, at pre, I know there's a goal of sustainability by twenty forty-six. When the plant is built, if it's built at Fitz Randolph, what will its power source be in terms of conventional versus sustainable power?
So, the, um, one of the reasons we're doing this is to lower our carbon footprint. So we're converting from fossil fuel burning to heat pumps that are electrically driven. And the way to really get our carbon footprint down is to get carbon-free electrons. And the intent is to, uh, is either the grid cleans up, uh, which the, the new Biden administration has proposed a, a clean grid by twenty fifty. Um, or we, but we go out and we have bilateral contracts and we get renewable energy. We are also putting solar fields on our campus. Uh, and, and these are very large fields that are going to generate a lot of megawatts of power. So, so we'll get clean PV power into our grid. Or we'll get renewable power from off-campus, uh, could be wind offshore or something like that. Or if the Biden administration is successful and we have a clean grid, we'll just buy it right straight off the grid. And we all have a small gas turbine, uh, that we have right now that, that does run, um, and produce some power onto our local grid and as fossil fuels.
My, my, thank you, that's very helpful. My question is really a little more focused. When this project opens, say in February twenty twenty-three, if that's when it, when it's completed, what will its electric power sources be? Are they, do you have, uh, non-conventional sources in place yet? Or is the expectation that it will run on the grid for the time being?
So, right now, we have four and a half megawatts of solar.
Okay.
West Windsor Fields, we're going to put in another eleven megawatts of solar. That will be complete by the time this plant is complete, so that will be feeding the grid, our, our grid, the university's grid. And it goes to all the buildings, so go to this new plant, it'll go to existing buildings, you know, because we're.
So what will the mix, what will your mix of conventional versus sustainable electricity be at that time?
So, we don't have an exact number because right now, we're trying to contract for renewable power off-site. Uh, we, we don't have a number for that yet.
Okay, thank you. Uh, you did remind me of a question I should have focused on with you before. Um, I don't know if this is your area or not. There is going to be a generator at the site, correct?
We had proposed a generator, but it, um, currently we're not planning on installing it.
Okay, well, that's part of the plan that's for which the university is seeking approval, is that?
It is.
Okay, so assuming approval is granted, will the generator be part of that approval or is that being pulled?
It's part of the approval.
Okay, now, that generator, if it were installed, what would its function be?
So if there's a power failure, I mean, you just saw what happened in Texas, right? All the buildings were freezing. If there was a power failure on the grid, we would run that generator to, uh, be able to use any hot water stored in that tank. It's not large enough to run the heat pumps. We would have to, um, cross-connect it to our cogent to get the heat pumps to run.
Okay, so this generator you're saying is not something that independently makes power to contribute to your grid?
No, it, it's a standby power use for the Tiger plant only.
Okay, and if it's used during, say, a week-long blackout, it would be used continuously in that week, is that correct?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
But, uh, we haven't had a, uh, a blackout since Sandy, and, and even the university stayed up during Sandy, so.
Right, that's fair, okay, so you, that's solely for emergency use and it's only to power the, uh, tank, but not for making power elsewhere in the university?
You're absolutely right.
Would it have the capacity to generate power to contribute to the university's grid?
Uh, it's relatively small compared to the university's grid. And, um, the intent is it's just going into the Tiger plant. Doing an outage.
Thank you very much, that was very helpful. Okay, thank you.
Who would you like to question next, Mr. Affron?
Well, I have a very brief question for Mr. Bridger.
Okay.
I'm sorry, is he here?
Bruce, who?
I think he's here, I saw his name.
Eric Bridger.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Eric Bridger, very briefly.
I was going to say, I don't have a witness there.
I found your witness. Mr. Bridger, are you here?
Yes, sir.
Okay, hi, how are you?
Good evening.
Good evening, uh, very quickly.
Um, I'm sorry to interrupt, but does Mr. Bridger need to be sworn for this? Mr. Mueller, would you?
Thank you, ma'am.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
Yes, sir, I do.
So sworn or affirmed?
Thank you.
Actually, you know what, we can, no offense, Mr. Bridger, we can strike Mr. Bridger, we don't need him.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Our next witness would be Ms. Fisher, um, that will probably take some time. Um, would it be better to do the other application first, or would you like me to continue on through ten o'clock?
I would like to continue, this is important, we should move forward.
Please, please continue and, and just, you know, um, be, move it along.
We are, we are. Okay, Ms. Fisher, is she available?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay.
Has she been sworn in for, not for cross, right, Jerry, do you need to swear?
No, you, you don't have to be sworn in for crosses, as long as you've already been sworn in.
Okay.
And she, and she has.
Yes, thanks. Go ahead, Mr. Affron.
Good evening, Ms. Fisher.
Good evening.
Could you describe just briefly what your professional credential is again in relation to this case?
Sure, I'm an acoustical consultant with NV five engineering and technology. I've been in the industry for fifteen years, my background is in physics and architectural acoustics.
And what is your, what is your, what academic degrees do you hold?
Bachelor's of science and a master's of science.
Are you an engineer?
I am not an engineer.
Do you hold a license in any particular field?
No.
Is it fair to describe you as an acoustical consultant?
Yes.
And in terms of your professional training, would that consist of your acoustical architectural degree?
Yes.
I, I, I hope it's not inappropriate. inappropriate for me to jump in and say that the, the board has accepted Ms. Fisher's qualifications as an expert.
I wasn't making a challenge.
Okay. Go ahead, thank you.
Thank you. Now, Ms. Fisher, what is the accr, the decibel output of this plant in front of the plant on the sidewalk?
Where?
In front of the plant on the sidewalk.
Where do you consider it to be in front of the plant?
Well, there's a sidewalk that runs in front, right?
I believe there's a sidewalk that runs in several locations.
Is there a sidewalk on the side of the street in front of the plant?
Which side?
On the side of the street where the plant is.
Uh, I'm sorry, you'll have to be more specific.
The plant front, fronts on the street, correct?
Which street?
How many streets does it front on?
I don't know, you're asking me where it fronts at the sidewalk, I'm just asking you for clarification as to which street you're referring to.
Do you know what street this plant is sit, sighted on?
I know that there are several streets that intersect where this plant is sighted.
What would you consider the front of this plant?
I'm not the one that makes that definition.
Of course, there's a couple of streets, just tell me which one you're talking about.
Well, I'm rather amazed that such a simple question is met with such resistance, frankly. Well, it has a hard question to say, where is this fronting on? Do you know what?
Well, let, let, let's just, um, lower the temperature, Mr. Afrin, do you have a, you're a street in mind, are you talking about Fitz Randolph or Faculty or?
Broadmead.
I really think that I should take it a step-by-step, I'm a little surprised that the expert can't answer this question. I'm not gonna give the expert information that she should know by her own study of the project. Now, do you know, Ms. Fisher, what streets this plant lays alongside of?
It lays alongside of two streets.
What streets are those?
If you want me to answer what the noise levels are at the street, you're gonna have to tell me what street you want the answer to.
Ms. Fisher, why don't you take it one question at a time, what are those streets?
I'm here to answer questions about noise, not sighting location.
Ms. Fisher, you're here to answer the questions that I reasonably improperly put to you, do you understand that?
Yes, but I don't understand why you can't tell me about what street you are asking about.
Ms. Fisher, you know the names of the.
Uh, Bruce, Bruce, Ms. Fisher, if you could just answer the question, wha, what, what streets, um, are adjacent to the, uh, facility?
Sure, we have Fitz Randolph Road, Broadmead, Faculty Road, and Western Way, that form a box around where the site is located.
Now, it's fair to say, isn't it, that this, the longitudinal length of this facility, strike that, it's fair to say that the facility is essentially a rectangular shape, correct?
Yes.
And it's fair to say that the long side of the facility does run along Fitz Randolph, correct?
Yes.
Now, if someone is walking on the sidewalk in front of that long side of the facility on Fitz Randolph, what would the decibel level be in front of the facility on that sidewalk?
Sure, it would vary as you walk down the length of the building, but it would be between forty-five to sixty dBA.
Forty-five to sixty dBA, and I just wanna be clear for the record, four-five to six-zero, S I X zero, correct?
Correct.
So when someone is walking past the facility on the sidewalk in front of the facility, or in the street right in front of the facility, they will be personally confronted with decibel levels up to sixty dBA, correct?
That is the potential, yes.
So even though you have said that in your understanding the decibel levels by the houses will be less, if someone were to walk in front of this facility on a stroll, they will be met with that range of decibel, correct?
Sorry, could you repeat the question?
If someone were to be walking past the facility on a stroll, they would be met with a range of decibels between forty-five and sixty dBA, is that correct?
That's the potential, yes.
Well, is it? Why will it be different at different parts of this longitudinal length?
Because of the way sound propagates across the site.
Now, how much of the frontage of this site along Fitz Randolph will be at the higher end of sixty dBA?
A small portion, but I don't have an exact percentage.
Well, do you have an understanding, ten, fifteen, twenty, thirty percent?
I don't have an exact percentage, it will be a small portion that might be exposed to sixty dBA when all the equipment is running within the facility.
And how much would be fifty-five versus fifty versus forty-five?
I don't have a percentage.
And the level of dBA as you walk past, it depends on where you are in relation to the facility, correct?
That is correct.
Other than reading the WHO report, in your work as a consultant on this project, did you consult any child health experts?
No.
Did you consult any health experts at all?
No.
And it's fair to say, and I don't mean to be repetitive, that you don't have a health background in any way, is that correct?
I do not have a health background, I do have an understanding of how acoustics affects hearing based on the WHO guidelines, OSHA, and my own industry experience.
But you have no experience as a medical practitioner in any way?
I am not a medical practitioner.
And you did not consult anyone in a medical or allied field as part of your work on this project, did you?
No.
What is the actual length of the building along Fitz Randolph, you know?
That would be a question for Ron.
Slide twenty-eight was a study you presented on the acoustics, correct? Remember slide twenty?
What, what exhibit are you talking about, Bruce?
Well, you had a, you had a PowerPoint which Ms. Fisher used, and there was slide twenty, I'll try to get on my screen if I can.
You know, do you know what hearing date?
I think it was, I don't think that document changed.
I, I think it's A1.
A1?
Yeah, the other exhibits aren't that long.
Yeah, if you're able to put it on the screen, that would be helpful, but, um, well, we'll move on for now, that's right. Did you do any study, I assume you did not, since the, the plan had changed in, in terms of sighting? But, Ms. Fisher, did you do any study with respect to decibel levels for this project from the Denunzio site?
No, I was not brought on until twenty twenty to the project.
Now, if this site were, if this project were built at Denunzio, and the garage goes up to the east of that site, then would that garage have any significant shielding effect of sound from this project?
I really couldn't comment on that because I don't know all the specifics with regards to the height of the garage compared to the height of what would be a theoretical Tiger facility. So unfortunately, I, I can't comment on that.
So that was not a study you made or could make yourself, or could make?
That is not a study that I have made.
You testified that at the UNow School, the Tiger dBAs is below the HVAC at UNow, did you say that?
I don't believe that I have said that. Well, maybe I did say that back when we were talking for the presentation, but yes, we measured the, uh, exterior HVAC for the UNow facility during the course of our site survey, and it was louder than what we are predicting the noise levels for the Tiger will be at that same location.
And where is that HVAC facility at UNow?
It is on the west side of the UNow building.
It's not on the playground, is it?
Yes, it is directly adjacent to the playground.
Adjacent to the playground, is it shielded by the structure in any way?
No.
Okay, now, what test results did you get for the HVAC at UNow?
I would have to go back and look at my notes for that information, I believe it was in the sixty to sixty-five dBA range.
And did you do the test personally?
Yes.
How big is the HVAC physically?
I do not have exact dimensions on that, I have not gone into the equipment yard to look at that equipment.
Now, a very small device can have a high dBA, can't it?
It can.
Right, so if I take a hammer and slam it on marble, I'm gonna get a high dBA at the moment of a, of striking, correct?
Potentially.
But that sound is going to dissipate rapidly because it's actually a very small surface creating that dBA, isn't it?
Not really, it, it dissipates rapidly because it's an impact type of noise. There's no source that continues that noise from occurring, whereas if you have a fan, that fan is constantly operating and constantly creating that noise level. So you only hit the hammer once, it dissipates quickly.
So, in other, strike that. Are you familiar with the dimensions physically of the HVAC?
No.
Well, how did you measure it if you didn't observe the structure?
I was standing next to it, it has a fence that is acoustically transparent surrounding it, I could not see through the fence, but I could make a measurement with my sound level meter directly adjacent to it.
How close to the HVAC were you when you measured it?
Uh, I would have to look at my notes to tell exactly, but I would say in the range of fifteen to twenty feet.
Did you take any other measurements of it? In terms of other locations?
No.
So you didn't measure it from other areas of the UNow property or playground, did you?
No, because it was not the focus of my study.
So you only have the one figure for that position of about fifteen or so feet from the HVAC?
Correct.
And do you know how many feet the play area is in total length at UNow?
No, I do not.
And do you know where the various play facilities are situated at UNow relative to the HVAC, such as swing sets, sandboxes, things of that nature?
I do not know distances, no.
The term additive property has been used, I believe, on some occasions by yourself in your testimony. Do you recall using that term at all?
No, I do not.
Do you recall using the term additive?
Uh, I don't recall, but I could have.
What does it mean in terms of acoustics, the word additive?
Uh, I'm not sure what portion of acoustics you're referring to.
Well, in your work, are you familiar with the term in terms of your acoustics work?
I mean, additive would be a summation of, of noise.
What is?
One potential use for it.
Well, what? Can you offer any other definitions of the term?
No.
Would you agree that a change of ten dBA is a one-hundred percent increase in the intensity of sound?
I do not have that off the back of my hand. It's sound is all relative and it's on a logarithmic scale.
Well, what does it mean to say something is twenty dBA versus ten, for example?
It's a logarithmic scale, uh, it's best kept in context with what the overall noise level you're talking about.
Well, when we say that, at various times, your client, for example, has had different dBA figures for sounds emitting from the plant, and so it's changed those figures, so let's say at one point, it said there'd be a forty-five dBA sound emission hypothetically, and then at another point, it said there's gonna be a thirty-five dBA. What does it mean to go from thirty-five to forty-five, or from forty-five down to thirty-five, in terms of sound?
Well, in the context of this project, it means that the design has evolved over time, uh, new equipment was taken a look at, new information was provided, and we have revised our sound levels, they weren't necessarily changed, they were just simply a factor of design.
No, I'm talking about the meaning of an increase in dBA rating, what does that mean when you go, say, ten dBA higher in terms of the perception of sound?
The perception of sound is that it would be louder than the noise level that was tend to be lower.
Now, on a logarithmic scale, well, what do you mean by logarithmic scale in connection with this subject that we're discussing?
It's just how dBA is measured.
Correct, now, what does it mean when you go from thirty-five to forty to forty-five? Are we doubling our sound level at some point, please explain what those statistics mean.
Well, it means that you increase the perception of sound, certainly, um, but going from very quiet to slightly noisier means that your perception is increasing, yes, but doubling it is a little bit of a misnomer.
What magnitude difference when you go, say, up ten dBA?
I mean, it's, it's a hundred.
Okay, so you're doubling it in terms of magnitude of sound every ten dBA, isn't that correct?
Yes.
Thank you. And if you go up five, are you going up by fifty percent in magnitude?
If you use that, yes, but again, going up fifty percent from very quiet is still quiet.
No, no, I'm not asking about given numbers, I'm asking about the way the math works, okay?
I know, but it all has to be considered in context with the numbers that you're talking about.
Well, I mean, if you, I, I'm simply asking if ten is a hundred, is five fifty percent more?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. When you did your, um, study on both ambient noise at the different house locations and the emissions of dBA from the site, once it's built, did you take into account open windows at the houses?
No, we were strictly looking at ambient conditions.
Well, ambient conditions means the conditions for a person using a structure, correct, at a given location? Well, what was, measures, let me ask you a question then, were you measuring for ambient conditions at the different house locations?
We were measuring at the ambient conditions for the exterior of the various house locations.
Now, why don't you take into account the conditions when people have windows open?
Because there are a lot of different constructions for houses, and so we want to be able to compare our ambient noise levels to our modeling program and to input all the various constructions, uh, would not be appropriate when we not necessarily know that information.
Are there computer programs when you model that on? Are there computer programs when you model that are designed to take into account open windows?
No, that would typically be done with a hand calculation.
Why didn't you do that?
We actually have done that with the U Now facility.
With the U Now facility? You did it with open windows or just at the facility?
Open window.
Why didn't you do that with the houses?
Because the U Now facility was closer and therefore more affected by the Tiger facility, and we found that noise levels through the open windows for the U Now facility were in a range that is acceptable for sleep for humans, and therefore it would also be acceptable at the houses because they start with a lower ambient level from the exterior.
What time of day did you do the measurement at U Now?
We did the measurements. All measurements were conducted between noon and four o'clock. For the daytime measurements, the evening measurements were conducted between seven and eight P M.
What days of the week did you use for U Now?
I can tell you that the U Now daytime measurements were recorded during a weekday. I don't remember if it was a Tuesday or Wednesday. For the evening measurements, they were recorded, I believe, on Saturday.
When did you measure D B A? Strike that. When did you measure the ambient D B A at the houses?
Ambient D B A was measured for daytime between noon and four and in the evening between seven and eight.
And how many days did you measure it at the houses?
There were measurements taken on three separate days.
What days of the week were those?
I can tell you that the daytime measurements were taken during the week. Again, I don't remember if it was a Tuesday or a Wednesday, and the evening measurements were taken on a Saturday.
And what were the hours when you took the evening measurements?
Seven to eight.
Why didn't you take 12 o'clock when people were mostly asleep?
Because we were taking the measurements based on a request from a resident who wanted to understand what the noise levels would be at the time that he would be outside having dinner with his family, and he indicated to us that that time was seven to eight on a Saturday.
Who was that resident?
Todd Cronin.
And he asked you to measure only between seven and eight?
He asked us to measure in the evening on a weekend.
Did you decide on your own to take measurements at the houses at other hours, such as late at night when people sleep?
We did not.
Isn't that a relevant factor in determining whether your plant will be disruptive or disturbing to the neighbors?
No, because our original goal for this project was to meet the New Jersey State Noise Codes, and those are independent of ambient noise level.
As an acoustic professional, particularly an architectural acoustic professional, wouldn't it be relevant in understanding these questions to take these measures at a time when people in the neighborhood sleep?
No, at the time of our survey, we understood that our goal for the project was to meet the New Jersey State regulations, and to do that, we didn't actually need to know what the ambient conditions were because they are independent of the ambient condition.
Now answer my question. As an architectural acoustic professional, wouldn't it be relevant in terms of the impact of the structure to know the ambient levels at times when people in the neighborhood sleep?
No, because as an acoustical professional, I look at what the criteria for the project is. At the time of our survey, it was the New Jersey State Guidelines, which are independent of ambient noise levels. So I came out to make ambient measurements to get an understanding of what the site was like in order to make good recommendations to meet or do better than the code, which is what our original goal was.
Did anyone at the university ask you to take measurements at sleeping hours?
No.
Did you make any recommendation to do that?
No.
Just one moment, please. You spoke about the... You call it WHO, but I'll refer to it as W H O study. And you said... What did you say? What did you recite from the W H O study in terms of decibel levels in children?
Sure. So the WHO guidelines recommend 55 D B A for playgrounds, outdoor, and they recommend... Let me make sure I pull it up and quote it correctly. Hold on one minute.
That's a maximum recommendation, isn't it?
It is actually an L E Q, so it is an average recommendation.
In other words, they were not saying this is desirable. They're actually saying that other levels are better for children, isn't that correct?
I don't know that I could read that into the standard. They are saying that the max is 50... Well, no, they're saying that the average is 55 L E Q, so an average over time is 55 D B A.
They're saying that should be the maximum that one averages, correct?
They're saying that that is the measurement that should be recorded over time, but yes, maximum.
Okay, so they would prefer lower levels, and this is where they say the highest level should be, correct?
They don't really say that they would prefer lower levels, but they give 55 D B A as the higher level that it should be, yes.
Okay, thank you. What is your figure for the ambient at 165 Fitz Randolph and 144 Hartley?
So 144 Hartley was... Let me see. I would need to pull up that information if you'll give me one moment. So 144 Hartley was 45 to 50 D B A for daytime, and for early evening, it was 40 to 43 D B A.
And early evening is seven to eight, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
And what do you have at 168 Fitz Randolph?
I would have to go back through my notes. I do not have that on hand at the moment.
Now, Acentec actually came up with 35 as the ambient at these locations, didn't it?
Could you show me that information where they state that?
I'm asking you. You're an expert who's seen those studies. Didn't Acentec come up with ambient figures going down to 35?
I have not seen any study from Acentec. I have seen noise data that's taken over a 24-hour time span that has noise levels everywhere, anywhere from 55 D B A down to 35 D B A, depending on time of day.
Your figures of the ambient at Hartley were the lowest ambient that you came up with, correct?
My figures were a representation of the measurements I took at the time that I was on site.
When you say 45 to 50, is 45 the lowest figure you found and 50 the highest?
45 was the lowest at the time that I was on site, and 55 was the highest, except that when cars or planes or helicopters pass by, that level can go up to 50 to 65 D B A.
Right. Naturally, if there's a temporary intrusion, it will go higher, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Now, so you're the lowest you figured you found at Hartley during the day was 45, and the lowest you found at Hartley in the early evening was 40, correct?
That is correct.
And Acentec's lowest figures were 35. Now, how do you count for a difference between your work and their work?
Well, could you show me Acentec's figures and exactly where you're seeing the 35 D B A? I think it's important to have that in context.
Well, I'm asking you. I mean, it's been in the record. Todd Cronin, in fact, introduced it. You've seen it.
Jerry, I have an objection here. If Bruce is referring to a specific document or report, the witness has a right to view that report.
No, I'm simply asking the witness, based on the facts that have come out, how does she account for the difference between the two results?
I think Christopher is correct, and she's entitled to see the report. If you're examining her about a report, she's entitled to be able to look at it.
Let me ask her a question. You remember the testimony that showed the Acentec figures?
That was presented by Ron.
It was presented by Mr. Cronin.
I don't remember seeing anything presented by Mr. Cronin.
Do you remember the testimony he gave and others gave that the Acentec figures showed a low of 35 ambient?
Jerry, again, I object. This is... If he's going to cross-examine our witness on a report or study or data, he needs to produce it.
I think I'm entitled to ask a witness if she remembers the testimony in the case she's appearing in as an expert.
I think she answered that. She did not remember the testimony.
She never said that. You remember the testimony that was brought forward identifying the Acentec figure of 35 as the lower ambient?
I mean, I remember that Mr. Cronin had testimony and that he discussed ambient levels, but I don't remember ever being shown those specifically by Mr. Cronin, and I don't have a copy of the Acentec report.
You never looked at it?
Looked at what?
The Acentec report.
I have not been forwarded a copy of the Acentec report. I have seen sound data from the Acentec noise monitoring locations, but I have not seen a report stating that 35 D B A is the ambient condition.
Well, what was the lowest sound data that they showed for ambient on the Acentec's results?
I would have to go back and look at that data.
You don't remember it sitting here today?
I would have to look at exactly what you're looking at.
I'm asking you a simple question. Do you remember what the lowest ambient that Acentec came up with when it made the sound examination?
No, because they've recorded measurements over multiple days. I have seen for certain weeks and certain days, but I haven't seen for the entire time that they've had a measurement, nor have I seen a report from them.
I'm simply asking a question. Do you remember the lower ambient figures that they reported finding?
I don't think the question is...
I think it's been asked and answered, Mr. Affron.
Well, with respect, I don't think the witness is answering whether she remembers that information. She keeps telling me, well, I didn't look at any study from them. I don't have it in front of me, but she's not saying whether she knows it.
You are referring to, Bruce, the testimony of a non-expert, somebody from the neighborhood, talking about results that they saw. You cannot question an expert on somebody just rattling off their summary of data. You have to produce a report, an expert testimony, or you have to produce the reading so you could properly cross-examine the witness.
Actually, nothing was rattled off. The actual figures were presented by the community witnesses who spoke. Ms. Fisher has said she has seen those figures, and I'm simply asking a question, and I don't know why it's so difficult to get an answer. Do you know, Ms. Fisher, what the lowest ambient figures reported by Acentec were?
I don't think it's proper. I don't think the question is proper.
Jerry, you can't block the question.
Let me finish. Let me finish. You're asking her about a report or multiple reports that are not before her, and she's entitled to have them before her.
I'm not asking her about a report. I'm asking her about... I'm not asking her about a study. I'm asking if she remembers, because she saw it, and she said she saw it. She said she looked at the Acentec figures that Acentec reported out from what it did and measured. And it's a simple question. Does she remember the lowest ambient figures they reported? If she remembers, she has to say what it is. If she does not remember, she doesn't remember. I don't know why it's so difficult to get a simple question.
Well, I don't think the question is proper, but...
Jerry, I'm pressing the question.
If Ms. Fisher wants to answer the question, certainly she...
Well, she has to answer the question, Jerry.
I don't think... I don't think so.
Ms. Fisher, do you remember the lowest ambient figures that Acentec reported? Yes or no?
So I can comment on the data that I have seen, which is not in the entirety of the data that Acentec has collected. I know that they have had their measurement sites out there for over a month, I think over two months now, and I have not looked at all of that data. I have looked at certain weeks and certain times. So I can't say what the absolute lowest is because I haven't looked at everything. I can say that the nighttime levels range in the 35 to 40 D B A range, and occasionally will dip lower than that for certain five-minute increments.
Well, thank you. That wasn't so hard. Now, why didn't you look at all of their figures?
Because it's another consultant's data.
Well, when you're evaluating the figures that you measure, and the town has retained an independent consultant, wouldn't it be relevant in checking your own information to see what that independent consultant came up with?
I'm sorry, you were garbled there at the end.
Yeah, just that question was a little bit garbled. Please repeat it.
Okay. Am I legible now?
Fine. Yep. Yes.
Thank you. You're aware that Acentec was retained as an independent evaluator and measurer of those figures, correct?
I don't think that's true, Bruce.
Well, who hired Acentec? Didn't the Princeton... Ms. Fisher, are you aware that the Princeton Municipal Government asked that there be measures taken on a continuing basis of the ambient, and that's why Acentec was hired?
But I don't believe it was hired by the municipality, Bruce. It was something the university did.
At the request of the municipality, correct?
Yes, but it was measured...
I'm fine. That's fair. I appreciate that, Chris. That's fine. That's fine. Chris, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, if I may interject, we were going to switch over to the other application at 10 o'clock. It's now 10 o'clock. So, Madam Chair, how do you want to handle this?
How many more questions or how much more time, Mr. Affron, do you expect to need to question Ms. Fisher?
You know, it's going to take a little extra time, and as you can see, sometimes it takes longer than expected. So I think if you want to make sure the other plan is completed, we should stop now.
Could we have a little...
Well, I just want to say, we'll be coming back.
I didn't mean stop now. I meant if you want to make sure the other one is done tonight, my suggestion is you stop me for the time being and go to the... I'm here.
I think it's very disruptive to stop in the middle of a testimony for someone, so I really think Mr. Affron should finish his questions, and hopefully it won't be much longer, and then we can move to the other.
I appreciate that. That would be...
I'm happy to do it either way, but I know the chair asked us to take a break at 10 because you want to make sure the other project gets done.
Well, I think Ms. Sax makes a fair point, and so if you could just carry on and finish your questioning of Ms. Fisher efficiently, please, we would be grateful. We would be grateful for that. Thank you.
Trying to be efficient, but unfortunately, I think it answers promptly.
Well, so to, I'm just gonna throw out there that the, the seconds that pass between your questions range from fifteen to nearly sixty. So the questioning, with all due respect, the questioning does seem to be going very slowly. So I'm just, I'm just with respect, asking that we just move it along, okay?
With respect, I try to, but if I need to pause and think it through, I have to do that. And that's just what I have to do.
Okay. Go ahead.
My question, Ms. Fisher, was very simple. If Ascentech was hired to do a independent study of the sound levels at these locations, isn't that something that you should have considered and reviewed in evaluating your own work?
No, because the Ascentech was hired as it relates to the construction noise, not as it relates to the Tiger facility. And again, ambient was not the consideration at the beginning of our project.
Well, it became a consideration as we went along, correct?
And we reviewed what we could then, but we reviewed enough to know that our measured noise levels during the day in the early evening were appropriate. And we took a review, a brief review of what we saw at nighttime. And as I answered before, we saw that was in the thirty-five to forty DVA range.
Just one second, please. The Ascentech measured ambient at night when there was no drilling. Isn't that correct?
Yes.
So, in fact, even if they were hired initially to deal with the sounds of drilling, they were providing data on the nighttime non-drilling ambient noise. Isn't that true?
Yes.
Therefore, shouldn't you have looked at that data in the course of analyzing the correctness and accuracy of your own?
We did a brief review of that, yes.
You didn't look at all of their data, did you?
No.
Don't you think it would have been relevant to look at all of their data in terms of checking the accuracy of your own?
We reviewed what we thought was appropriate to review.
In addition, your ambient measures also took place at times when drilling was going on. Isn't that correct?
No.
Oh, you did not? Okay. So you decided that you would rely only on your own non-drilling ambient at night, but not make use of Ascentech's identical range of study for the same time periods in the evening? Isn't that correct?
I'm not sure I quite understand.
That question was very awkward. Actually, you've answered my questions as best you can earlier. I think we're just about done. Ms. Wilson, I need one minute to pull up a document. And then I think we may be finished.
Okay.
I'm gonna blank myself out for one minute. It'll be easier to do that. I'll go right back.
Okay.
Ms. Wilson, I'm just going to call up one document just to close the gap, and there's no issue later. So give me a moment.
Can you tell us what you're about to show us, please?
Yes, it's Mr. Cronin's letter where he contains some statistics.
I object.
Why?
This is a neighbor's letter that's a summary. If you're gonna use, if he's gonna, he's been up a number of times talking about it. We can't, you can't cross-examine it a professional witness based on a neighbor's letter after he's spoken a number of times about it.
It's very useful to actually listen to the whole proffer before you raise an objection. I just want to show Ms. Fisher the page from the Ascentech study that Mr. Fisher, Mr. Cronin had introduced earlier. Isn't that part of his letter? You asked me to show it to her. Now you're telling me you don't want her to see it?
I said any report and data. I didn't say a letter from a neighbor.
That letter is already in evidence, first of all, and I'm showing it because of the data that he attached, which comes from Ascentech.
I am not aware of it in evidence. Jerry, has a letter been marked into evidence?
No.
It doesn't have to be in evidence. It was presented as part of his presentation. And although he's a layperson and didn't say mark it in evidence, it's a part of the record of this hearing.
I disagree.
One moment, you're asking me to show your witness the actual Ascentech figures to which I was referring. And now when I want to present them, and you know perfectly well what they are, now you say you don't want her to see it. Are you waiving the right to have her see it? Yes or no?
I place an objection on the record that you can't produce a letter from a neighbor summarizing data.
That is not what I said I'm producing. He's catching the actual record of the figures.
I'm allowed to say something here. I'm also placing an objection that none of these were presented three days before the hearing. I'm also placing an objection that it's irrelevant. We've had testimony and also a report from the municipality that ambient noise is irrelevant to the measuring of projected future noise. It's completely irrelevant. So it's a waste of time. Those are my.
It's a waste of time when the other side wants to do it.
I made my objections.
Let me ask this. Bruce, is what you're offering is actually a document that Ascentech prepared?
Yes, it comes, it's there, it's their graph of figures.
Okay, it's not, it's, it's not a summary by Mr. Cronin of.
I don't know where Chris got that from. I never said that. It's easy to want something to be something that it's not. The only problem is I don't know how to get it up on the shared screen.
Well, then, I mean, if you don't know how to get it onto the screen, and there's an objection to it, and it's data that's been described and that you've already questioned Ms. Fisher about, I think we can fairly move on.
It's in the record already, actually, so. And Ms. Fisher was referring to those figures, so.
Do you have any other questions for her?
I think that we may be done with Ms. Fisher. Well, I'll say this. We will proffer the Ascentech report as an exhibit. I think it's already in the file.
I object, because you need someone from Ascentech or a technology, someone that produced the report to actually enter it into evidence.
Princeton University hired Ascentech at the town's request.
Produced.
There has been, excuse me, Chris, please stop.
Bruce, you know.
This has been referred to by a witness, Todd Cronin, and he has already presented it to the board that has already seen it. And there was no, excuse me, and there was no objection to this evidence coming in. And there was no objection to Ms. Fisher describing these figures that she reviewed and knew when she finally answered my question. And secondly, if Mr. DeGrazia insists that the only way it can come in is by subpoenaing Ascentech or asking they come in, it is his expert. He needs to bring them in.
It's not my expert.
You hired them.
Hired in connection with the construction project. There's no foundation for it, and you can't take a summary of a neighbor as evidence to.
All right, but we're back to this again. It is not a summary. It's the actual graph produced by Ascentech. And Mr. Cronin testified that it was posted by Princeton University on its website. It's an admission against interest by Princeton, Princeton University. It falls within every possible evidentiary rule of admission there.
Except.
Now, I will do the following. We'll have to mark some exhibits when this is all over. I am proffering the graph that Mr. Cronin put in, and I'm also proffering the entire Ascentech study, which should be in the record officially. It has been referred to repeatedly by witnesses, and it needs to be in. It's an admission by Princeton, which posted the document, and that's how Mr. Cronin received it. And so therefore, there's no basis to block it. My suggestion is we should not argue more about this. I've concluded my questions of Ms. Fisher. And that actually concludes, just one moment. And that would conclude my cross-examination of witnesses. So I suggest, Ms. Wilson, we turn to your other project. Otherwise, we'll never get to that.
Yeah. That is. Thank you. That is what we will do. Thank you, Ms. Fisher. So I said we were gonna take a short break. Let's take an exceptionally short break, maybe another three minutes, and tee up the wind development application. So the break starts now, but I'm gonna keep talking to Carrie. Carrie, can you bring over the, the next applicant and their, and whatever experts they have?
Well, one should be a panelist already.
Already panelists? Okay, good.
They just need to, to join the meeting.
Okay.
And Madam Chair, just to be clear, we will be coming back. We're gonna be continuing this as soon as this other matter is, is resolved.
That's correct. And I, I'm hoping and expecting the other matter, you know, probably will take about a half hour. I don't want to be held to that, because there are a couple of folks who will need to testify. But it is a, a simple redrawing of lot lines or minor subdivision. It is, you know, not, it is not an application as most of us usually think, think of them with. Although, sorry, I really probably shouldn't say that, because it's certainly an application, but it, it is hopefully a straightforward and pretty simple matter to, to get through.
That, I'm sure. Thank you. We would appreciate the ability to try to get this tonight. It has been the fourth hearing, and we sort of finished our presentation the first night.
I think it's fifth. This is the fifth hearing.
Oh, is it the fifth? I lost track. So we would, I know it's. We would appreciate that if, if after it, we can come back and hopefully get this resolved.
We will come back and, you know, I'm hopeful too, but no promises. I think at this point, we've probably had close to fourteen hours of testimony, et cetera, and.
Michael, can you text Tom Latizia? Because, send him an email, because I don't have my Outlook open. Just let him know we're waiting for him. Tony opened up Zoom, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Oh, oh, Justin. Yeah, I think Tom.
Okay, we have, Mr. Latizia is here now, I see.
Great. Um, Tom, do you need Tom O'Shea?
Uh, no.
Okay.
I need Don Sweeney.
Uh huh.
And Kate Keller.
Okay, they're both here. Well, hopefully. Thank you. And Mr. Sweeney was here earlier, so. So the members are just taking a very quick break, because we've been discussing throughout the night. And they should be back in about another minute or so.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
So whenever all the members join back, then we can begin.
Okay, I see Jerry's back. Jeffrey, are you there? I see you're, there you are.
Mia, she's here. I think we're good.
Then, Alvin.
I'm here, but I have to change locations, so I'll, I'll be moving shortly.
Okay.
So we have, Owen's here. I think we have everybody.
Okay. Mr. La Place, why don't you start? Mr. Muller, do you need, well, are the, I guess I should ask about notice and jurisdiction, et cetera?
Yeah, the notice is proper, proof of publication and service is proper, and the board has jurisdiction.
Great. And do you want to swear in, Mr. La Place?
Michael, if you raise your right hand, you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth.
I do.
So sworn or affirmed?
Good evening. Tonight, we have a minor subdivision application before us. The applicant is Wind Development Company. The location is 301 North Harrison Street, which is the location of the Princeton Shopping Center, which has been at that location since about nineteen fifty-four. The subject prop is, property is Lot 1.01 in Block 7401 in the former township. The subdivision involves the northerly portion of the site. It's just south of an adjoining property, which is on the corner of Turhune Road and North Harrison Street, which I'm sure the applicant will go into more detail about. The application is for minor subdivision approval with some setback variances and some waivers from the checklist. The new lots to be created would be the balance of the lot, which would still remain the shopping center, and that would be about twenty-six point seven acres. And then the new lot, which is referred to, you'll probably be hearing it referred to as the Boomerang, because it's shaped like a boomerang, is about one point four acres. Couple other points I wanted to mention. The site of the proposed subdivision is in the shopping center, SC, and AH Affordable Housing Five Zones. The lot, the, the area of the proposed new lot is currently wooded and has no structures or formal landscaping. The larger balance of the subdivision, which would be where the shopping center is, has an established parking lot area, buildings, courtyard with landscaping and perimeter plantings and shade trees. And the subject property is not located within a historic district and does not contain any landmark structures. I also wanted to note that the proposed subdivision was recently amended to the Affordable Housing Five Zone District, which I measured, I mentioned earlier. It's one of the zones. So that, that, that's it for an overview. So that that that's it for an overview. Madam Chair.
Okay. Then I guess we should hear next from Mr. Letizia unless any other staff have anything to add? Like Derek or Jim? Okay. Mr. Letizia?
Yes, good evening, all. It's been a while. I hope you've been safe and healthy these past several months. I'm sure you've been tired. Even on your hearings. So for the record, Tom Letizia, attorney with Troutman Pepper Hamilton Sanders in Princeton, representing Wynn Development LP, the applicant for this application. Mr. La Place provided an excellent overview, so there's no need for me to go into a lot of repetitive detail. I would agree with the chair that this is a relatively straightforward and simple minor subdivision in order to subdivide the Princeton Princeton Shopping Center track along the zone boundary that splits the property in its northern section between the SC Shopping Center District and the new AH five affordable housing zone. The result of the subdivision is the creation of two lots. As Mr. La Place noted, a 1.406 acre lot that will be in the AH five affordable housing zone and a 26.7 acre remainder parcel that will be in the shopping center zone and contain all the existing retail center improvements. The purpose of the subdivision is to enable the AH five zone lot, or commonly now known as the Boomerang parcel, to be combined with the adjacent parcel known as lot 1.02 to the north at the corner of North Harrison Street and Turhune Road, which is also in the AH five zone and is under the control of my client in order for these properties to be combined and developed in the future for affordable housing. I can represent to the board that we reviewed your professionals' reports in this matter, and we agreed to comply with all the recommendations therein. So with that, we'll provide a brief presentation. I have two witnesses. I've told both of them to be as quick as possible. So because we know that you still have perhaps another couple hours after this application.
Oh, heavens. I hope not a couple of hours, but.
I hope not. I know.
But I appreciate your attention to efficiency, shall we say. So do you want to share your screen or is someone else going to do?
Someone's going to do that. So my first witness is Donald.
Tom, let me ask you a question first. Part of this application is not consolidating one of the lot, one of the two new lots that have been created and the lot north of that. That's not part of this application.
That's correct.
In fact, you don't even need planning board approval, as you know, for consolidation. Okay.
So Mr. Sweeney.
Yes.
I think I see you there. Okay. If you state, I think you need to be sworn. I don't think you have been sworn yet. So raise your right hand for Mr. Muller, please.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
So sworn or affirmed? Please state your full name and spell your last name.
Donald Sweeney, S W E E N E Y.
Ms. Sweeney, what is your occupation?
A professional land surveyor, been licensed to practice surveying in the state of New Jersey since April of 1991.
Can you briefly provide your relevant background and experience, please, for the board?
Sure. So I'm currently employed as the branch manager for the Mount Laurel Branch Control Point Associates, Inc. Been in that position since May of 2020. Been employed with by Control Point since August of 2018. Prior to that, I worked for about nine months for DDK Consulting in Piscataway, and prior to that, I owned my own survey company for 24 years from January of 94 through December of 2017. And in my capacity as president of my company, I was often called upon to provide testimony at planning board and zoning board meetings.
Madam Chair, I offer Ms. Sweeney as an expert in land surveying.
We accept his qualifications. Thanks.
Ms. Sweeney, do you have an exhibit to pull up for the board, please?
Sure. Can you see the subdivision plan on the screen?
Not yet.
Not yet. Let me try. Now?
No, we still don't see it, Mr. Sweeney.
There we go.
Okay.
Okay.
Can you identify this exhibit, please, Mr. Sweeney?
Or this is a boundary survey and minor subdivision plan that was prepared by me in my capacity at Control Point Associates.
Mr. Muller, will mark this A1, please?
Yes.
So, Mr. Sweeney, please briefly present the proposed subdivision.
Sure. So as was mentioned earlier, the property consists of 28.14 acres. It's currently in two separate zones. Zone SC for shopping center district, which would be this area here, and then zone AH five, which would be, as we refer to, the Boomerang lot to the north. The applicant is seeking minor subdivision along the zoning boundary, which would be this area here separating the shopping center from the Boomerang. As you can see, there's a, obviously, the shopping center, we're parking on the primary lot. This area here is mostly wooded. On the plan, the applicant is seeking specifically two setback variances. They are in the area here where there is this one-story frame building tucked into this corner along the zoning line. The building is approximately 40 feet long by 14 feet deep, and at its nearest point to the zone is 0.4 feet to the proposed lot line. Variance is requested would be to obtain relief from the zoning setback requirement, which is a minimum of 50 feet, along with a building setback requirement for zone SC, which is 10 feet. Both variances would be for the same one-story frame structure. And the applicant sought, and the board granted eight waivers for the requirement to the minor subdivision checklist for this application. The site is not in a historic district, and no development is proposed, rendering the checklist items impractical or unnecessary, which is one. A waiver was sought.
Sweeney, just a quick question. Does this plan comply with the municipal standards for the grant of minor subdivision approval?
Yes, it does.
Okay. And did you have an opportunity to review the the report from Mr. Purcell and Mr. Bridger in terms of?
I did, and there were two specific items that they wanted addressed. One was a parcel closure report to see if there was an issue with a potential closure error for the outbound of the existing lot 1.01. I reran the closure reports today. The lots definitely form a mathematically closed figure, but I would be happy to review that with the municipalities consultant until they were satisfied that that would be the case. The other recommendation was that two pairs of New Jersey State plane coordinates be added to subdivision plan for future of the two proposed lots, and that's something that we certainly did. In addition, received today, noticed that yesterday the Mercer County Planning Board had reviewed and approved the minor subdivision.
Thank you. I have no further questions of Ms. Sweeney, Madam Chair.
Okay. Do any board members have questions for Mr. Sweeney? Not seeing any. Okay, Mr. Letizia, do you have someone else?
Yes, one more witness, Ms. Keller, please.
I can stop sharing my screen now, Tom?
No, leave it up.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
Ms. Keller, you need to be sworn.
Yes.
Jerry, can you?
Yeah. If you could raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm that testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
So sworn or affirmed? Please state your full name and spell your last name.
Sure. My name is Kate Keller, K E L L E R.
Good evening, Ms. Keller. Can you please provide the board briefly with your professional background?
Sure. Hi, everybody. Good evening. My name is Kate Keller. As I just said, I'm an associate principal with the firm of Phillips Price Greigle Laney Hughes. I'm a licensed professional planner and a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners. And I've have about 10 years of experience of planning in New Jersey. I've been accepted as the witness by about 35 boards and municipalities around the state.
Thank you, Ms. Keller. We we accept your qualifications.
Okay, thank you.
Perhaps you can start, Ms. Keller, with a brief description of of the scope of work that you were asked to perform in connection.
Sure.
Did we swear, Ms. Keller, in?
Yes, we did.
Okay. Sure. So, you know, you've just heard the details of the application from our surveyor, and my role here is as a professional planner to really review the appropriateness of the overall subdivision and specifically the variance requests tonight from a planning perspective. And so, you know, in doing that, I've reviewed the applications and plans, consulted with my client and the other professionals that are part of our team, and reviewed your professionals' reports. And and also, of course, you know, relevant sections of your zoning ordinance, affordable housing documentation, master plans, et cetera.
Can you start by describing the site?
Sure, sure. So just just very briefly, as you just heard, we're talking about block 7401, lot 1.01, which is more commonly known as the Princeton Shopping Center property. So in particular, the area that we're speaking about Boomerang portion of the site, which in the site's north and northeasterly corner. This area measures approximately 1.404 acres. And the dividing line here between that that represents the proposed subdivision line is really the zone line between the majority of the shopping center property, which is located in the SC Shopping Center zone, and the small portion that's supposed to be subdivision, which is located in the AH five zone, along with the property to the north. So as mentioned, this area is generally undeveloped, and it is located to the north of the shopping center. So this is proposed to become a new lot, which is identified on the survey as proposed lot 1.012, which would then be used in conjunction with the lot to the north, block 7401, lot 1.02, which in total would be able to effectuate the development of affordable housing on that site. So in general, you know, this is a relatively simple subdivision in that it's it's considered a minor subdivision per your ordinance. We are requesting bulk C variance relief, which is related to, it's related to one condition, but two variances are technically required. And this condition, as noted, is related to a one-story existing masonry storage building, which is located in the northeast corner of the shopping center. Yes, thanks to zooming in. So it's yeah, it's right around. It's actually this area where the mouse is. It's not the larger bump out. We have a little bit more of a setback there, but in particular, this is where the setback is at. It's it's smallest. So well, following the subdivision, this building, which is like a one-story sort of masonry garage that's used to just cite storage, equipment, maintenance, things like that, would be located approximately four tenths of a of a foot from the side yard property line. And so the variances we're requesting are both from the provisions of the SC zone. The first is that all structures are required to be 10 feet from a property line. And the second is actually from the, so that's from the lot line. The second is actually an exist, really an existing condition at this point because it is from the zone boundary. And so that's also 50 feet is required from a residential zone, which is the AH five zone here. So in reality, you know, no construction is proposed, nothing is changing. And that the subdivision does need all the other applicable bulk requirements. So just to briefly into justification for these variances, the board is aware that that these can be, excuse me, very, both variances can be granted on the basis of either a C1 hardship factor or a C2, also known as flexible C, in which the benefits of the of the relief outweigh any detriments. And additionally, must address the negative criteria. So I think in this case, you know, there is somewhat of a hardship here in that there is the existing zone line. But more generally, I believe that the the benefits here outweigh the detriments. Basically, the relief is not significant. The structures are existing. No physical changes are proposed. And most importantly is that the reason the subdivision is being proposed is to effectuate the affordable housing, the inclusionary development on the adjacent lot. So that really clearly provides a benefit in terms of addressing Princeton's third round obligation in accordance with the settlement agreement and the approved housing plan. And it also, you know, it will allow this property in this Boomerang portion to be developed as its zone, which is the AH five zone, which it could not be individually. It can only really be in conjunction with the adjacent lot. And of course, the shopping center will continue functioning in as it has and as it will. So, you know, and, you know, there will not be, I don't foresee any detriments as a result of this. Again, this deviation is not substantial, no visual impact, you know, because nothing's really going to be changing. So anybody seeing it won't see any difference. No impacts on the use of the shopping center, circulation, parking, nothing's increasing limits of disturbance. And again, you know, I think it really it facilitates the the zone, the the implementation of your zone plan. So in terms of purposes of zoning, I believe, you know, it encourages municipal action, purpose A, because affordable housing and inclusionary development is considered promoting the general welfare. It allows for the establishment of population densities, which is what will happen here following the final development on this, these properties, and provide sufficient space for both commercial on the shopping center and residential development in accordance with the MLUL. So overall, you know, I, my opinion, the statutory criteria is that this is not a not a significant variance is requested, and relief can be granted without any detriment. So that's that's all I have for direct testimony.
Thank you, Ms. Keller. That completes our presentation, Madam Chair. And so we're available for questions from the board or the public.
Okay. You know, in my eagerness to move forward, I didn't really properly introduce the this by reading how it's shown on the agenda. I will do that when the time comes to vote on the resolution, which is before us tonight. But first, I guess I would ask that you stop sharing the screen and we'll open up to questions if the board has any questions for Mr. Letizia or Mr. Sweeney or or Ms. Keller, Mr. Cohen, and then Mr. O'Donnell.
Yeah, it's not so much a question, but I I just wanted to make the observation that the slopes up from the shopping center parking lot to the affordable housing site are fairly steep. And to me, that's another mitigating factor for the setback variance because the the structure, that existing structure is really nestled almost into the ground and won't be at all perceptible to. you know, the residents of the eventual housing on the AH5 property. So I just wanted to make that point.
Okay, good. Thank you. Owen, you had a question?
This may be an extremely minor point, and I apologize if I'm wasting people's time, but both Mr. La Place and Mr. Latizia said that the larger of the lots would be 26.7 acres. And both, but the reports from Mr. La Place and from Mr. Bridger and Mr. Purcell put that number at 28.1, which is exactly 1.4 difference, which is the size. And I see Michael is ready to jump in here.
Oh, yeah, go ahead, Michael.
I will admit that that was a problem that we, that's a total acreage. You're absolutely right. And you can see why I was a history English major instead of math.
Okay, any other questions? Mr. Cohen?
I just wanted, I was gonna mention this later, but since Owen mentioned it now, that same error is embedded in the resolution that was drafted beforehand. So we just need to make sure that we modify the resolution.
I noted, Jerry.
David, there was a revision of that which was circulated, of the resolution which was circulated today.
I thought I.
It did not take, I'm gonna go through the things that had not been picked up. But Tom Latizia pointed out to me kind of late in the day today about what the correct number is. So as we go through the resolution, I'll make some corrections and that'll be one of them.
Okay.
Yeah, but you're right on that. You're right on that.
If there are no other questions from board members, I'll open up open up for questions or comments from the public. So this is a public hearing portion of the application. If you want to pose a question or make a comment, now is the time to virtually raise your hand.
No hands are raised.
No hands are raised. Okay, we'll give it just a few more seconds in case someone is suddenly realizing it's their turn and fumbling to find the the right place. It's in the center of the bottom of your screen, little raise hand icon. Still none?
Nothing.
Okay. Then I'll close the public portion of the meeting and if there are no other questions, Alvin, is that you asking a question or are you? You're on mute. No question? No question? Okay. Okay.
Think he was sharing his thumbprint.
Got it. So the resolution, which Jerry will go through, I just want to introduce, since it's laid out on the agenda, this is a resolution of approval for the Wind Development Company LP Minor Subdivision with Variants at 301 North Harrison Street, Block 7401, Lot 1.01. This is file number P 2121. Should that be 2021 or? Well.
No, it's.
Sorry, no.
21.
I'm sorry, 2121-013MS. So Jerry, you want to walk us through it and make sure?
Yes. As I indicated in colloquy with David, sent out a revised resolution to reflect comments that I received from Tom yesterday, maybe it was the day before. So the first change is going to be in paragraph two. And this really has nothing to do with anything Tom has submitted, but in the second line, it says 1.406 acres. It's a minor point. But Ms. Keller said it's 1.404, which is it?
1.406, Mr. Sweeney, is that correct?
It is 1.406, okay.
Okay, so my apologies. I think there were a few numbers.
No problem.
Let's trust the survey.
In the last sentence, it'd be the shopping center lot in the SC Zone will be designated Lot 1.011, consisting of 26.73 acres.
Correct.
It should actually be 26.734 according to the minor subdivision plan.
Okay. And then in relief sought, in the fifth line down, at least the way it printed out for me, it talked about a wood frame storage building, which I had gotten from one of the reports, but Ms. Keller said it's actually a masonry storage building?
I believe that's how it's shown on our ALTA survey. There, I mean, there's a few buildings back there. This one, you know, just from seeing the site, I, yeah, I believe that it is masonry, but.
Okay. Tom?
Don can confirm.
Thank you.
I don't have knowledge of that. I mean, is that important to me?
No, well, no, I just wanted to get the right, I'll put that masonry. Mr. Sweeney, did you have something to say on that?
Sure. So the front of it is cinder block, but I think the sides are framed, so it could probably characterize as a masonry and frame building.
Okay.
Split the difference. Thank you.
Then on my page three, the bottom page, paragraph nine, says the following, municipal staff and professionals give advice to the board at the hearing. Michael La Place, I'm going to take out the references to Jim and Derek because they did not testify. And in paragraph 10, it was supposed to be room left, but I'm just going to say none because nobody from the public testified. Now, David, with respect to the waiver and I'm sorry, not the waivers, the variances. Should I, on page five, I talk about the negative criteria and the enclosed storage facility I write in that second paragraph, the one that starts the negative criteria. It's adequately screened for Lot 1.012. Should I say anything about the slopes? I was not aware of that until you stated.
No, I interpreted that language as being related to the slopes.
Okay, sure. It's exactly what I was intending.
There you go.
Okay, and from what Mr. Sweeney testified, that in fact, there is not a closure error. Is that correct? Did I understand that correctly?
Yes, that is correct.
So I'm going to change on the conditions of 15A to read, "The applicant surveyor shall consult with the municipality's consultant with respect to the closure on the outbound of Lot 1.01's satisfaction." Okay?
Yes.
It eliminates the reference to closure error, and that's it.
Okay. So.
What we would do is first we'd have a vote on whether we want to approve it and grant the variances, and then we'd have a separate vote on the resolution itself, as modified by what I've just said.
Okay.
I would move approval of the first part of that, the variances.
And the minor site plan.
And the minor site plan. Thank you, Jerry.
You're welcome.
It's subdivision, just.
Yeah. Subdivision.
Yeah.
Minor subdivision with variances and waivers.
Right.
And waivers.
And waivers.
That is the essence of my motion.
Thank you, Mr. Quinn. Would someone like to second?
I will second his essence.
Seconded by Mr. O'Donnell. Carrie, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Mr. Oakman?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Ms. Sax?
Yes.
Mr. Tex Arney?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Chow?
Yes.
And Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Lucian Carey?
Thank you. And on the resolution of approval as amended per you know, the items that Jerry went over just a few minutes ago, was there a motion on that?
I'll move it second.
Moved by Mr. Cohen, seconded by Mr. Quinn. Carrie, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Mr. Oakman?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Ms. Sax?
Yes.
Mr. Tex Arney?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Chow?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Lucian Carey?
Thank you very much. Try not to.
Thank you.
Good to see you, counselor.
Likewise.
Take care, Tom.
It certainly was nice a week before St. Patrick's Day to see a move and second motion by Quinn and O'Donnell. I want more Quinn and O'Donnell motions this month. Very nice.
Thank you, Mr. La Place.
I enjoyed that.
Good night.
Good night. Okay. Let's turn back to the tiger application. I know it's been a long night already, but I hope I hope the board is willing to power on on this because I really, really like to get through it tonight. So Mr. Affrin, I believe, was finished with his his questioning and so Mr. Mueller, what what comes next? Does Princeton have an opportunity at this point?
Allow me to interject, please. We still have issues on the objectors case. We cross-examined. We didn't present witnesses yet.
Oh, witnesses, I see.
And we have an evidentiary problem that we've just been discussing. And that's the question of these ASNTech records. Now, I will call Todd Cronin as a witness, and he'll explain where he got them from. And he actually can access the entire website and pull the whole set of ASNTech records down. And we're gonna have to work this issue out from an evidentiary point of view. Chris has made a point, which I don't agree with, but nevertheless, I understand. He's saying that in his view, those records can't be used unless the person or entity that collected the data testifies that they did so. I don't agree with that because I think Princeton paid for it. Princeton did so voluntarily when the town asked, and I think it's their own expert material that we can use. But, and I'm surprised that there'd be an objection to putting it into the record here, but my problem is as follows. The board might accept it, but Chris has an objection now to it. So if we have to go to court over this issue, then I need to make sure that we have satisfied that issue, if possible, before we end up in court. So if Chris is going to maintain his refusal, his objection that the ASNTech material cannot come in except through ASNTech, then we need ASNTech here to speak to its records and what it did and how it created them and why. Now, Mr. Cronin can testify that Princeton University's engineering official, Steve Hancock, gave him the code to the ASNTech website that Princeton's using. And he has access to all those figures, including figures of you now for that matter. But, and I believe that's sufficient to put them in the record, however, Chris has an objection that we need ASNTech to do that and have to come in through the entity that created them. Now, it's a significant legal issue that needs to be resolved one way or the other, and if the board agrees with me, it still leaves us in the position of Chris's objection. And so I think we need to know whether the university is maintaining that position, that it will maintain an objection. If it does, then frankly, we need ASNTech. Now, I think the university should.
Let me, Bruce, I could probably comment. My main objection was basically the relevance of it, and it was basically wasting time on cross-examination because we've heard from the two experts in the area, including the municipal, that those readings are relevant for determining the sound measurements and has nothing to do with the modeling that our expert proposed. So I was objecting mostly because it's a waste of time to go through and to just focus on that. So if Bruce or whoever, Todd, I'm sorry, Todd Cronin had, you know, talked about it and wanted to enter those as part of his, I have no objection to you just having it there and marked for identification purposes. I don't necessarily think there's a foundation, but I just didn't want to waste a lot of time on irrelevant data.
Well, here's the.
Yeah, I mean, the data, if it's what is in his letter, his letter was was sent to the planning office and the board, and it's, you know, posted on the website and everything, it's sort of part of the record, but my concern was relevancy too. If those numbers are about decibel levels during construction and what we're talking about is the built structure and the sound slash noise generated by it, then it doesn't seem like, you know, that they're ever going to do anything except talk past each other, you know, on this particular question. So I don't know, maybe Mr. Mueller can speak to this, whether it's the board's prerogative to decide whether whether that information is relevant in order to move on, or whether it's enough to say, we've seen what is in Mr. Cronin's letter and, you know, take it into consideration like everything else, but knowing that it it relates to the noise happening now, not the noise projected or estimated to be a factor after construction when the plant or the facility is operating.
Louise, let me say this. Some of those figures obviously take place when the drilling's going on during the day. But it was very clearly brought out, both by Todd, when he spoke in the community portion, and this Fisher agreed that at nighttime, the drilling is not going on. So the ASNTech figures at night reflect the normal ambient. It's just as reflective of that as the university's experts' figures of ambient at night. So that's why they're relevant. They show different numbers, quite different actually, from what the university offers. So obviously, during the day when drilling is going on, that's not, that's not an issue, but they're relevant in particular for periods when drilling is not going on and they were taken, weekends, for example, and nighttime. So they are relevant. They may have originally been taken for a different purpose, but they are actual data on the relevant subject of non-drilling period ambient, and they contradict in large respect the university's figures in certain ways, in large ways. So they're very relevant.
There's a lot of data, different times of year, winter, you know, compared to summer, and there's a whole bunch of data on what's out there now. And I agree, it's during the night, during the day, and you could cherry pick different numbers and do different calculations. But in the end, we still have the municipal consultant. You know, you could take a look at the January 19 report that says it should note that the state code does not consider ambient levels when establishing sound limits and merely establish maximum allowable sound levels. While it's important to understand the characteristics of the surrounding neighborhood in terms of ambient sound, the ambient levels are not relevant to predict or actual sound levels that the facility is in operation. So I'm just saying that Todd has put his testimony out there and he put the numbers that he wanted to refer to, and that's part of his record. Done.
Well, no, it's not done because we now have a position earlier stated from the, it's not done for a couple of reasons. First of all, I don't want the university coming back in court and saying, well, ASNTech wasn't there, and I said clearly on the record to Mr. Affrin, it can't be admitted unless ASNTech is there to say so. So if that's, if the university's dropping that position, we can resolve some aspects of the problem. But if you're maintaining that position, then number one, I want Todd to say where he got them from, and number two, we may need ASNTech. So that's the point. If the university is going to waive an objection that we don't need, that we need ASNTech to introduce those figures because there's no foundation without ASNTech, then I don't want to be in a position of the board agreeing with me, but a court disagreeing and agreeing with Chris later. We need ASNTech in here.
I could preserve.
Yeah, I'd like to just ask if either not whether Mr. Affrin can make the case as to relevance, but whether he has a witness who can make the case as to. who can make the case as to relevance. I think that you know, our two attorneys are talking past each other in a way because if the evidence is not relevant because ambient noise does not impact either the post building operation noise levels, nor does it have anything to do with the regulations that govern the allowable sound levels. I just need somebody to explain to me, somebody with expertise in acoustics, why we should still hear evidence about what the ambient sound levels are.
Well, the relevance question is a legal question. An expert can answer as to whether evidence is relevant. It's relevant for many reasons. First of all, the university introduced ambient levels as part of its case. And it said, we've taken measurements and these are what the ambient levels are going to be. And then you don't have to worry about it, et cetera, because they're not going to be that terrible. Now we have Assentec, which did figures, originally perhaps because they're worried about drilling sounds, but they have figures for the ambient at night when there's no drilling, and those figures differ dramatically from the university's experts' figures. So if the university introduces this on its own case to show, don't worry, it's not so bad because compared to the normal ambient, we're at it or below, and we then show the ambient figures through Assentec are much lower than the university finds, that's relevant on its face. It contradicts what the university offered in its case. And and secondly, it's relevant, frankly, because levels of noise from an industrial type plant, I know Mr. McCoy doesn't like that word, but levels of noise from that type of plant are certainly relevant to what's customarily incidental to permitted uses in the zone. And when we can show that the ambient is much lower than the university claims through the independent persons analysis hired by the university at the town's request, and that contradicts the case the university started, it's obviously relevant legally. It's to the board and you, David, for example, to evaluate the weight of it, but it's relevant. And so we have to have this evidentiary issue closed off, one way or the other. And it's a, it's a legal question whether it's relevant. We don't have an expert coming to tell us whether it's relevant.
Let me, let me jump in. But I I think clearly it's relevant in the sense that that Bruce just referred to, that the university basically has opened the door for this and submitted in quite a bit of data about ambient noise levels. So if there is something else that's been prepared and by the uni, on behalf of the university as well, which show ambient noise levels, I I think it's admissible on relevancy grounds. I mean, I'm concerned, my my concern is really not having the expert who prepared it available so that the board and others, including members of the public, can ask questions. But but if the university is not going to push that, then it seems to me we've resolved that.
I'm not gonna push the issue, Jerry.
Okay.
Part, you know, they made it part of, they referenced it. I have no objection to that, so.
Okay. Fine. So I think, I think we've resolved that then.
Yeah.
I I just want to make the the that the university's numbers and the S, the other numbers are not in any way inconsistent because the university's numbers are from seven to eight P M. And experts, the other experts' numbers are at midnight. And it stands to reason that the ambient noise is going to be slightly different, and it is, it's a slightly different number. It's uh, the thirty-five to forty range or the forty to forty-five range. So it's, it could be as little as one or two decibels apart. You know, and we've heard testimony that it's two or three decibels is perceptible. So there's no you know, there's no, there's no inconsistency in the information that's been given to the board so far. And I think that we, we really don't need to hear more about the inconsistencies in the numbers. We just need to hear arguments made as to the merits on on each side, you know. Is a difference between forty-one and thirty-eight decibels important? What, you know, is this a a permitted accessory use or is it not? I mean, I think we're to the point where we've heard enough testimony, and we need to hear sort of closing arguments.
Well, you can foreclose my testimony. Mr. Cronin is going to testify for another issue anyway. But um, I do want to get in as a matter of evidence, and if Chris is no longer raising an objection to the absence of Assentec, I simply want to proffer, and we have to pull it down from their website, their full range of figures since they should be part of this record. Um, Mr. Cronin's letter has a certain graph at a certain point, but the whole set of figures should be part of the record. So if Mr. DeGrazi is not objecting to the absence of Assentec to admit this, then I do need Todd because Todd has the code from Princeton University to pull it down from the website. He can do that, and it can be introduced as an objectors exhibit. Um, in addition, he would be called as a witness for some other purpose. So I believe we need the opportunity to put the Assentec figures in the record completely. I don't want to be accused of of having only a part of them, and they should it all be in there. They've been testified repeatedly to, and uh, they need to be there. And I'll agree, in a sense, they're not inconsistent because they're different times of the night. But the point the university raised was, well, the nighttime ambient is at this level, but the Assentec shows it actually goes down much lower much of the night. So there's not inconsistency in the numbers per se, but in the purpose to which.
I have, I have no objection to all of the the Assatec information being part of the record that you don't. That's just.
That's fine.
Excuse me, excuse me. Can I ask a question?
Please.
Bruce, are you asking to have the Assatec numbers that are in the letter? Are you going beyond that once I think, some more, more that's from the website?
Yeah, thank you, Alvin. That's a good clarification. We want, we have, in a sense, the uh, letter is in already, and I don't think there's an objection to that any longer from Mr. DeGrazi. We think the whole series ought to just be in the record because it's been referred to, and we shouldn't have a partial record, so we should have.
Okay, I, I gotta say, if you're gonna go that far, it still has to be whatever comes off the can, you know, from the web, it's supposed to be authenticated by someone. That's, that's part of what you're gonna have to do with 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 evidence. So what you're doing is, you're still saying we have to have somebody probably from Assatec come in and say, this is, this is what what it says, what it says it is. I don't think you're gonna get, I mean, maybe we can agree, but I I think you still have a problem here. If you're gonna get it, if you're gonna try and get in the full Assatec record.
I I don't disagree in principle, um, and Mr. DeGrazi was raising an objection to doing it precisely without that authentication. Now, Mr. Cronin can authenticate it, at least in part, because he was given the code to the website from Assentec by Princeton University. But if you're talking, Alvin, in terms of a person who did the study or or took the figures authenticating it, obviously Todd is not that person. Now, we can all, the two sides can waive that issue, but obviously the board has its own position. So if the board were to say, no, we're not accepting it without authentication, then we need Assentec. But if Mr. DeGrazi and I agree that Princeton's waiving that objection, and the board is content to accept it, then we can waive the authenticity issue.
Yeah, I I think that, excuse me, I think to facilitate, I think to to facilitate this, we should just accept it uh, o- o- off the website and and we'll have resolved that issue. And Alvin, I.
This is, we're accepting it off of Princeton's website, a a report that they accepted from the.
Let me just explain. So um, as a benefit um, to the the neighbors and community, we put some um, monitoring devices that recall, will record real, real time noise, and there's a record of that on a website, and we provided people that wanted the information with that information. So that's basically it, and we could mark it as an exhibit, put it in the record. We just want to move on because it's not really material.
Okay. Mr. Affrin, how many witnesses do you intend to call?
We have Mr. Cronin, and I believe he will be our only witness.
Okay.
I'm gonna mark um, it's oh, one, this material that will be taken off the university website from Assentec.
And it's the report in its entirety, is that?
Yes.
Jerry, didn't we have an oh, one already, which was?
That's correct, we did.
Okay, sorry. Thanks, Bruce.
So, Mr. McGowan, does that satisfy your concern about authenticity? It's a report in its entirety that is being accessed through Princeton's website.
You can, you can disagree with me. Um, my objection stands. I mean, if we're gonna go, if you're gonna go that far, then you need someone there that that can really authenticate it. I don't even know if the report, the whole report has been in. The only thing I know is I'm looking at now was a letter from Mr. Cronin, as soon to s- to cite part of that. Now, you know, that's the only thing I know. You know, pull something else off the we- the website. I I'm gonna maintain my objection. Somebody has to be here, if you're gonna go that far, to authenticate it. And it can't be, and it can't be Mr. Cronin who says, well, I got some information from somebody else to, you know, to, to, you know, you know, and this is what I used to get this information.
Yeah, okay. Well, I think if it's a, it's a report sort of signed and sealed by the consulting firm that prepared it, and it's, and the report is in its entirety, it seems to me that that, you know, that has all of the context and is, and is uh.
Chris, can you tell us?
But I I don't mean to just be.
Honestly, David, I I don't even know. I was under the impression it was just found reading measurements, uh, maybe.
I suspect.
To to just specify what form we're talking about here, because.
Yes, if I can, I could say, it's a, it's a, it's a live streaming of data. So there is no report. There's no signed and sealed report. Um, data is collected. You can go on it, you can go on to the website at any time and get data from the, from the past week. I I did it yesterday, and I got data from the past week.
Okay, I was completely misunderstanding.
And it's an Assentec web, it's it's hosted by Assentec on their website.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much.
Our, our point was, it was the data that's measured, you know, on a weekly, daily, hourly basis. We were not saying there was a study. It was the data that comes in.
So how how is it we? I mean, we accept that on an ongoing basis as evidence? I don't.
I I think the board could take it for what it is. So if if the neighbor wants to make statements and cap, you know, summaries, you know, you gotta look at the the professional, i- if they're not a professional, who's making the statement and using whatever data they want. I mean, the board can weigh the credibility of the evidence. And and I'm not making an objection so we could just move on. And the board has the ability to rate, rate, um, to review the credibility.
Okay. Mr. Affrin, please, let's, let's let you go ahead and um, and question your witness, okay? I'd like to get that done.
Just one second. He has to, he's listening. Um, he has to be brought on. Uh, can I just want to say, as to Mr. McGowan's point, you know, legally, I I just want to respect what he was saying. Legally, you know, he's absolutely correct, without question. If the parties waive the issue and the board as a whole waives it, then we don't have a legal issue any longer. But I wanted to pay respect to what Mr. McGowan was saying. He's legally absolutely correct as an evidence matter, but the parties can waive it and the board can accept that waiver. And I think.
Something is happening here. Let me ask Mr. McCoy a question. Can, can one get hard copy of what's on the website? It sounds like you can't.
You can. Can. You can download, uh, you can take a screenshot of the, of the, of the image, and you can download a a C S V file. So you can, you can have the data and you can sort the data, and that's what I've done for the past week.
Is that, how far back does it go from when they started?
You, you, we can make a special request to Assentec to get it back to December. I think I installed it in December fourteenth.
Okay. If that could be prepared and submitted, so at least we have some, something we could look at.
Let me ask McCoy a question, if I can. Is that, is that data in graph form or chart form or both? Because Mr. Cronin introduced a part of it. I think for one week period, there was a graph. Um, so I'm wondering if Mr. McCoy knows in what format it it's, it comes out when you draw it down or print it out.
It comes in both. You can get it in a visual graph, or you can download a spreadsheet with the uh, every five minute interval number.
So we would like to get both versions of it in the record because obviously people have different facilities in terms of understanding and reading them. So um, I certainly want the graph form, but I think we need both um, in the record. Can that actually be done then? I'm sorry, that was a question. Can that be done?
Who are you asking that question of?
Oh, I was talking to you, Mr. McCoy, I'm sorry. Can we get it both down in the spreadsheet and the graph format?
Uh, I, I'd have to, I I'm not, I don't manage the Assentec relationship. I'd have to check, but I I have had a colleague who has downloaded um, the actual spreadsheet from the beginning, and I assume you can get the weekly graphs, but I'm not positive.
Okay, well, we we'd like to try to get the graphs especially because it's easier for most people to visualize.
It's what I presented. I presented the graphs uh, in the last, in the February presentation.
And Mr. Cronin presented at least one of the graphs from one of the periods. So uh, so may I ask how we're handling that? Is the university, Mr. Cronin does have access to, at least he'll describe what he has access to. Is he gonna pull it down, or will the university produce this for the record?
We can produce it for the record.
Okay. So I'll just um.
Bruce and Matt Chair, um, Todd, I don't remember if he's been up and testifying, make statements two or three times already. This is probably the third, maybe more. Um, so I would like to, you know, leave it or testify in areas he haven't, hasn't really touched before, not go over the same stuff.
My intention is to focus him partly on the graph he presented, just so it's clearly now spoken to, because I want to be, I also want it in the record again so that no.
I don't know.
I'm gonna limit, I'm focusing his testimony, not going into everything he spoke about.
Okay, I, because we, we, we know what he said, we have his letter, and we also um, have his graph. So um, if that's all it is, and we've withdrawn the rejection of having it marked, so if that's it.
Quite all it is, is a little bit more, but I'm gonna try to avoid his talking about what he spoke about earlier. Directly. There'll be a little bit of overlap, but it's not gonna be much, as far as I know. I think he's up, right?
Yes, and um, I assume, Mr. Muller, that Mr. Cronin remains under oath? Or do you need to swear him at, again?
Oh, he remains under oath.
Okay.
And I take it after this testimony, um, I don't know if there's any members of the public that want to speak, but then I, the university is certainly entitled to undertake redirect with respect to the cross-examination by by Bruce. Um, and Christopher, does the university intend to do that?
Uh, so far, no.
Okay.
Go ahead, Mr. Affrin.
Is the intention to do closing argument tonight?
Yes.
Well, Chris, I'm glad you run the board. I'm asking the board.
I, I wanted very much to do it tonight, and um, yes, but you know, I just want uh, for us to move on, and I am concerned about, you know, asking for goodness knows how many reams of pages of documents of, for, you know, coming off of the website when you know, based on what I've heard, I I I'm not uh, convinced personally that it makes any difference at all. So, but I'm just by talking, making things take longer, so. Yes, I would like to hear. I think we'd all very much like to finish this tonight. Um, so if you can question Mr. Cronin, and then we can start to hear closing arguments. Um, I'd like to do that.
They start to hear. Um, normally the objective goes first, but the point is if we're gonna start, I don't want to finish and then have Mr. DeGrazi go at seven thirty when everyone's fresh. That would not be a fair way of doing it. The two arguments should be heard together. I don't want to end up going now, and then when everyone exhausted, they're listening to it, and then everyone hears the university when they're all fresh.
I don't make mine breathe.
So I think.
Why don't you? Mr. Muller, were you about to say something?
Yeah, I think. Yeah, I think after the oral arguments, we certainly wanna entertain a motion. If it's a motion to approve, we wanna go through conditions and I'd wanna go through with the university, the reports and get the university's reaction to, to the conditions that are set forth in the reports.
Okay.
Do that in five minutes, Jerry.
Okay.
Oh, so my point is this, I don't think we should do oral summations if I'm gonna end up going, then the university goes next week. We should do it all back to back.
I can do it in a couple minutes.
Mr. Affrin, is there a reason why you don't wanna finish tonight?
I wanna finish, but I don't wanna end up doing my summation and have the.
No, when that, when that.
Sir, no one is saying that.
Yeah, we'll do, yeah, we'll do both. As Christopher indicated. Yeah.
Yeah, Mr. Affrin, just continue with your witness, so let's move on.
Mr. Cronin, are you there?
Yes.
Okay. You've spoken before, but just for this part of the record, where do you live?
Forty-four Hartley Avenue.
Forty-four Hartley. Now. Did there come a time when you? Spoke with anyone in connection with ASN Tech's work?
With ASN Tech's work? Yes, Steve Hancock was the one that arranged it with me, who is a civil engineer with the university. And he came out with the Ansen, ASN Tech crew to install the device.
And did you gain access to the ASN Tech records at any point?
Uh, yeah, Steve Hancock sent me the, the login information.
And. When you produced your letter to the board, there was a graph attached, do you recall that?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Now, where did that graph come from?
It's from the ASN Tech website.
And did you access that by the code Steve Hancock gave you?
Yes.
Have you accessed other data from the website?
Uh, there is, there is the report that Ron mentioned that is a kind of spreadsheet version of it as well.
I'm sorry, someone just put a message up while we were doing this. And apparently the whole panel sees that. I just wanna know whether it pertains specifically to this. Now, do you have your letter available to just share it on the screen? The letter you sent with the.
The letter. I could find it. I hope. Yes.
Could you do that, please?
Uh, let me just make sure. Yep.
You know, just, just to make the record clearer, is this a January eleven letter?
Yeah. Yeah.
Why don't we, why don't we mark that as exhibit oh-three?
And, you know, just, this is to the question of relevance, right? The, on November seventeenth is when Kristen Applegate came out here with Chandre Davis and took the measurement at seven PM. Um, and they came up with the forty to forty-five, I think Fisher said forty to forty-three, I didn't, they told me forty to forty-five. And then the ASN Tech was set up and it regularly records thirty-five. It's, it was thirty-five last night. You can, I can show you. That's a ten, that's a ten degree decibel and that's a hundred percent magnitude of difference.
To your knowledge, what position does Kristen Applegate hold?
We, we've been over this already.
Excuse me?
We've been over this already. She did not take the measurements, there's.
Chandre Davis, it did.
Fair enough. What position does Ms. Davis hold at the university to your knowledge?
Is. Uh. She is the Assistant Director of the Office of Environmental Health and Safety.
Did she present any credentials to you when she appeared to do that?
No, I didn't see her. I mean, I saw her across the street.
And if you would scroll down in your letter to the second, to the attachment, can you do that? Can you, can you turn that?
Uh. Can I turn it? Um. I don't know if I can. But you, here, I mean, I can pull up, I, the site is live right now, you can watch it.
Well, that's okay. I just, hang on a second. I just wanted to authenticate what you have here.
Right.
So where did this graph come from?
This is from the ASN Tech site.
Now, you spoke earlier during one of the community portions about this graph, correct?
Uh, yes.
And. Did you pull this down directly from the ASN Tech side or did someone do it for you?
I did.
Thank you. Okay, so this is now, I mean, it's oh-three, correct, Jerry?
Yes.
Okay. Now. Did you have any discussion? Strike that. How long have you lived in this neighborhood?
Uh, we arrived in. God, twenty fifteen, sixteen?
Twenty sixteen.
Yeah.
Now, you mentioned your children earlier, just for the record, how many children do you have?
Two.
And what are their ages now?
They are six and nine.
Now. Do you do anything of a recreational nature by way of walking around the neighborhood, biking, running, things of that nature?
Uh, yeah, every, every day.
What do you do? Describe what you do in terms of what streets you use in the neighborhood.
Um, we walk around all of the neighborhood. So we often go, I mean, when the weather's better, uh, when they're not in school, for instance, we would go biking lots. And, um, yeah, of course, we use Fitz Randolph, we use the U now parking lot for biking a lot. But yes, I mean, this, these are, these are the streets next to our house.
And on Fitz Randolph, do you use the area of Fitz Randolph where the Geo Exchange plant will be located?
I mean, we go by that, yes, I'll, I mean, I'll, yes, all the time.
And you go by that on foot, jogging, bicycling, what do you, what do you refer to?
Biking.
When the weather is good and your children are obviously not in school, how often would you say weekly you use Fitz Randolph in this way?
Oh, all, all the time. I mean, it's, 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 it's just the street next, next to us. It's also less busy than, than Broadmead because there's half of its parking lot that is unoccupied during the weekends usually.
Describe what you do in terms of biking and walking around the neighborhood. Do you make a circuit using Fitz Randolph and other streets? Do you go only down Fitz Randolph? What is your, your habit?
Oh, I don't know if we have a habit, we just, I mean, it's, it's, it's like anyone that would use a, a local street in a neighborhood. We just, we go up and down it like anyone would. I mean, it's, it's, it's just. Part of our, you know, very local world here.
One moment, please. Um, I just, I think we've resolved the issue and the university is gonna provide the documents, but I just wanna clarify for Mr. Cronin that if need be, he could do this. Do you still have access to the ASN Tech website?
Yeah, I should add that U now is on that website, so it has constant monitoring for U now. So the, the question about HVAC, all that can be resolved by looking at that. It's monitored twenty-four seven, there's no need to take measurements, it's just constantly measured. It never gets up in the numbers that, that Fisher mentioned, by the way, that the idea that the HVAC system is a sixty-five, you can just access the site and never says that.
What numbers have you seen on the site for?
Well, presumably the HVAC's going right now. It is. U now is at, is at forty-three. Forty-two. Right, right now.
So.
Have you?
Would you assume that it's going now?
Well, I mean, I could just.
Not my place to ask questions.
I, I don't, I mean, you could just look at it, you'll never see when it's a weekend or evening, when I would assume it might be on, that it goes over anything above, I mean. It never gets up to sixty-five unless the construction's going.
Wouldn't it depend on where the? Noise receptor is, where it's located? If it's right next to the HVAC, then it would have a different DB level than if it was around the corner of the building or something.
Absolutely, it's just the testimony that the HVAC is, is on the playground or visit, it's not even, it is not visible from the playground. It is, you stand on the playground, you cannot see the HVAC, that is just not true.
Okay, I thought she testified it was just on the other side of a fence, but.
It is on this side of the building. I don't, I, I, my point being, I don't think it has much of an impact on the sound of the playground. I don't think it's, I don't think it's relevant. If you're standing on the thing, it might be sixty-five, yes, but no one is.
Thank you. My only question actually was earlier, you have access still to the site if you needed to use it, correct?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. That concludes what I had from Mr. Cronin.
Thank you.
No questions from me.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, are, do board members have an opportunity to ask or is that, I'm not familiar with the?
Sure, absolutely.
Any board members have any questions for Mr. Cronin? Mr. Cohen, go ahead.
Yeah, Todd, I just, I feel like I remember in the testimony this evening that Julie Fisher's measurements at your house in that seven to eight timeframe on a weekend evening showed decibel levels in the forty to forty-five.
Correct.
Range. So do you find that level of ambient noise to be bothersome?
Do I find it bothersome? Uh, it kind of depends on the nature of the sound. If it's a constant hum, yeah, I'd find that bothering. But as it kind of drifts between, if it drifts between thirty-five and forty, no, that wouldn't bother me at all.
I, I guess what I'm asking is when you're out on your patio at seven o'clock on a Saturday night, are there sounds that you find bothersome is?
No, 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 it'd be entirely a matter of the quality of the sound. I think if it's a constant hum in our lives twenty-four seven forever, that's a very different thing than cars driving by, for instance, and the general level being up around forty. I don't, I, I don't, that doesn't bother me at all. The, the kind of normal sounds of a city doesn't bother me. I could be in a city, it's just the hum in a, in a, in a place that's quiet and you have a hum in the middle of it, that would bother me, yes. I mean, I don't know if anyone's actually spoken to the quality of the noise or what, they've even told us what the sound is, but I gather it's continuous.
Or, or. I think, I think. The transformer probably would be, I think the pumps, maybe not so much, but I don't know.
Yeah, that was my, my understanding was that. When, when everything's going all out, which is not all the time at all, it's very different than sort of normal operation. But I don't know about hum versus. You know, any thing else.
Well, the university's never said how often it will be going all out versus more limited operation.
I think there was some testimony about that, not, not real specific.
Right.
Uh, but estimated, you know, that it'll be. You know, doing this kind of thing in cold weather and that kind of thing in hot weather and, you know, anyway.
Again, yes. It will vary, but there was no discussion about how much will be all out versus more modest if there's very mild weather. So we don't know and the university hasn't given us that.
Very briefly, David, to your point, I think what, what, what's, what's concerning is that the ambient is regularly at thirty-five at night. The, the difference between thirty-five and forty-five is enormous. So we would never, ever be in a situation where we have quiet. It would never be quiet again, it would always be at the kind of, at that high level. And if it, as I say, if it's temporary, that's fine.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I don't, you know, if it goes until seven o'clock, it's fine with me. I don't even mind the construction noise.
Okay.
But he has their triggers, right? David?
I, I, you know, I don't wanna get, get into a back and forth, but I think the, the level at midnight inside your house is be much lower than the level outside, you know, at your property line, so that. Right?
I'm from California, I like to keep this sliding glass door, it is a mid-century modern house and it is a California-based architect. The whole point of why we live here and are an architectural historian is we have giant sliders and that we can keep those things open as much as humanly possible. It's, and that is meaningful to me, to have it be quiet, as I think it would be for really anyone.
Okay. Thanks, thanks for sharing.
Yeah.
Other questions for Mr. Cronin? Okay. Let's move ahead then with.
We have any other members of the public who have not spoken before?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I, I thought, well, I thought that, well, we had public hearing, we've had a whole public hearing. Um, do we need to have another one?
Well, I, I think we're, we're really not finished with.
Okay.
The input from the public and Bruce's, uh, Mr. Cronin, and the cross-examination was part of that too, so.
Yes, okay.
But we don't want anybody, I, I think, given the lateness of the hour, if they've already spoken, we would ask them not to speak again.
We have forty-five members in attendance, we have no hands raised.
Okay. Well. Given what Miller, Mr. Muller just said, we will offer the opportunity for people before closing arguments, for people in the public who have not offered comments before or who have something entirely different to say, to raise your hand and address the board again for, we respectfully ask no more than three minutes. So are there any hands being raised?
We have one, we have one, it is a person that spoke before, but we do have one.
Okay, um, why don't you bring her or him and?
Please, I thought we weren't gonna have people who spoke before speak again.
Well, I, I'm going to ask as soon as we see this person if they have something totally different to say or whether they're going to repeat anything that they've already said. I think that's. I'd like to do that.
Okay, Mr. Tariq Shabander.
He's, he's.
Promoted.
He, he's spoken, he's spoken at least twice before.
I've spoken a number of times and I just like to make one, one final closing comment. Frankly, I, I live at seventy Hartley Avenue, I'm a neighbor of Todd's. And I think, at least from my perspective, the concern that I have is that with all of this data that everyone seems to be struggling with, we really have an opportunity here to have bad information. And I would encourage the board that if you do approve this application, that you would put a condition on that approval and that would mandate that the university provides testing after the facility is built and commits in writing to mitigate the sound in the event their projections are wrong. And I think from my perspective, as being a homeowner here, that would certainly satisfy me. When they talk about the.
Thank you for that, that, that's a suggestion that's been made and, and, and we've heard it loud and clear, I.
Okay, thank you.
Like that.
Thank you.
Thanks.
There, there is only one other person that has the hand raised, it's Alicia Fowler. So I'm promoting her.
Is this someone who has spoken before?
No, I don't believe so.
No, I'm, I'm late to the, late to the meeting, I'm a little bit nervous, I've never spoken before. Um, I'll put my, my camera on, hi.
Oh, thank you. Hi, Ms. Fowler, you need to be sworn in by Mr. Muller.
If you could raise your right hand.
Yeah.
You swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth.
Yes.
So sworn or affirmed, please state your full name and spell your last name.
Thank you. Um, my name's Alicia Fowler. Um, I live at twenty-six Lake Lane. I live at, uh, the Dean Mattie, um, faculty housing. And my husband and I and our son moved here in, um, we moved into this place in July, um, knowing, of course, there's construction. Um, and we hope to buy a home here. My husband's a professor and, um, I have another child on the way and we're sending our youngest son to U Now. Um, and we knew the construction is happening. Um, and I, I guess I just wanted to echo briefly, and it's late, um, the neighbor, um, neighbor's comments about using this area as a, as a place to be. We walk all the time on the, um, trail in the woods off of Faculty Road and on Fitz Randolph and Broadmead a lot. Um, actually, it's a great place to go with kids on bikes and in strollers and on foot. Um, and I, I guess I just, I want to share my, my concern about the noise. Um, not just for the construction, which is of course happening and fine, but in the long term, um, and how that would impact the residents and the wildlife and the children in this area. And, um, if there is a suitable alternative, I, I, I guess I respectfully ask you all to please consider it. Um, one thing that attracted us to Princeton in this area is how beautiful it is. And there's a pair of nesting great horned owls, um, in our trees outside right now. It's really cool. Um, the male comes and brings the lady rodents, uh, in the nest every night. It's so romantic. Um, as a fellow gestating creature, I really empathize with that. I just, I guess I, I hope, um, that the consideration of the natural world and part of what makes Princeton so special, um, could be considered with all of this. And, uh, just thank you, thank you for your careful consideration of how this will impact everyone who lives here. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, that's it.
Okay, then, um, I'll close the public comment and, um, let's, um, move ahead with closing arguments is traditionally, um, the applicant goes first or the obje- who?
The objector would go first.
Yeah.
The objector goes first. Mr. Afrin.
Thank you very much. Uh, thank you all. Um, also to the community, we've had many meetings and everyone has stayed with this through many nights. Uh, I want to thank the board as well. Um, these are long hearings and, you know, I'm sorry, Louise, if sometimes my questions had pauses, but really it didn't take that long. And, um, but it's necessary for me to think through this process. Sometimes as you question, because a lot of what we do here is to make a record for a court proceeding. Because often the planning board does feel compelled to approve projects for reasons dealing with how it sees its legal charter. But the objector has a responsibility of putting evidence in the record for certain purposes that may not really be apparent, uh, to everyone when it's happening. And so I, I appreciate everyone's patience, um, in this process. This application is somewhat unusual in that it's not a variance or it's not a use variance. I'm not, I don't think there are any variances actually being sought. And it's not, if they are, they're, they're minor, they're not really concerning us. And it's not a permitted use either. So there's no use variance being sought, which is a very difficult evidentiary process. And at the same time, it's not a permitted use. Section ten B two six three of the zoning code defines the permitted uses in the E one district. And those are educational activities of any institution of higher learning organized for not, not-for-profit and activities customarily incidental thereto, provided that there is no nuisance factor other than as occasioned by the incidental light and the noise of the congregation of people, of passenger traffic and the delivery of goods. Also residences for faculty and staff of such an institution and single-family homes. So we have really two uses, three uses in this district. One is activities of a school of higher education, nonprofit, two residences for faculty, students and staff of such an institution and single-family homes. We also have U Now, which is present and it's a nonprofit school. But what we don't have as permitted uses are any other uses. There is no other kind of office use permitted. There's no retail use permitted except that which is customarily incidental to a college, for example, a coffee bar or a bookshop. We have no public utilities or utilities at all listed as a use in this district. And what we have is a very, very tightly construed zoning district for a college, housing for people who live or work in the college and single-family residences. And that's it. Now, how does this application then come forward? The university is saying it's a permitted use. Well, that's a misnomer. The only way this application can come forward is either through a use variance, which is not being sought here, or because the university contends it is an accessory use customarily incidental to any of the foregoing permitted uses. And that's in section, subsection D of ten B two sixty-three. And so the university has a burden here. It's not a permitted use. They have to prove that this use is customarily incidental to one of the permitted uses. Primarily in this case, they're the college. And so it's not something that they have a right to build unless they can demonstrate it is, that this plant is customarily incidental to a college. Now, the zoning code is very, very careful. And, and really, you don't need me to say this, but I'm going to say it anyway, because sometimes we lose sight of it. The zoning code is not the planning board's code to work with as it sees fit. The planning board has to implement the code. And the code was designed here very carefully to limit what happens in the E one district. And it doesn't allow accessory uses that are incidental to uses. It very carefully says those which are customarily incidental. And so one might argue, well, electricity is incidental to a college. That's not what the code says. Any additional use must be customarily incidental. And so what evidence is there in the record that establishes that? We're dealing with something that has had many names in this record. An energy plant, a geothermal plant, a geo exchange plant. It is an industrial facility. Now, it's not manufacturing products, but it's an industrial facility. And the question the board has to answer is whether this is a proper accessory, accessory use. Or whether the university should have been seeking a use variance. Now, you may ask yourselves, well, why didn't they do that? Why didn't they seek the use variance from the zoning board or potentially in some cases from the planning board? There's a good reason for that, because it would be almost impossible to obtain. Use variances are very difficult to obtain. And here, the use is very much contrary to the zoning code itself and the traditional uses that have always taken place in this area. And if they were to seek the use variance, they'd have to establish both the positive and the negative criteria. Now, are there, we're not going to analyze that, because it's not before us. But it would be an extremely difficult evidentiary showing. Almost certainly one they would not succeed in making. Most likely with the zoning board and most likely in court if it ever went that far. So the university's taking an easier path because it knows it would almost certainly could not get a variance to build this plant in this location. And so it's trying to tell you that this squeezes in under the customarily incidental addition to section ten B two six three. Now, what evidence is there that this type of utility structure, which is very large, which will generate large quantum of noise on a near continuous basis, that is sufficiently noisy that it requires all sorts of protections that the university has been adding into this project? Thicker louvers, walls now, changes in design. So the question has to be asked, how, what evidence is there in the record that this utility facility, which is what it is? That requires six hundred and fifteen, eight hundred feet deep holes to be built over a two-year period? And that is an industrial facility. What evidence is there in the record that this is customarily incidental to a college campus? Or to a collection of single-family homes? Or to a nursery school? We've heard all this evidence from parents of children at U Now that this is the last thing they ever thought would appear next door to their children's school. Who would think that the university which owns, and I was very careful to bring this evidence out, this nursery school, this land, this building that it paid for and designed? Who would have thought the university would put a utility facility next door to people's nursery school? Is that customarily incidental to such a use? Most of these houses are faculty houses, but they're homes people own, they're single-family residents. And it's actually in, in, in academic neighborhood. Most of those houses are, uh, faculty houses. The university owns many of them, sells them temporarily and gets the right of first refusal to get them back later. This is a faculty neighborhood designed intentionally so that faculty can live near the campus. And virtually everyone who spoke in these hearings, almost without exception, there were one or two people who were not, were faculty. Many of them also send their children to U Now. And it's quite clear that this is not what anyone expected would be in a zoning district dedicated to a college and single-family homes. Now, what evidence has the university offered that this is customarily incidental to its operation? Well, we know they, they have a type of geo exchange plant at Lawrence Apartments that was brought out through Mr. Nyquist and Mr. McCoy. And Mr. Nyquist was very, very clear to say that is a much different project and operation than what is being proposed at Fitz Randolph. First of all, it's much smaller. Secondly, it doesn't have an outside independent utilities plant to service it. He was very careful to say that it operates through these individual units in each apartment that are analogous in size and style, et cetera, to what you normally see in an apartment in a closet where the heating unit appears. There's no giant utility plant next to those apartments. Each apartment has a little unit that services to provide the geo exchange. The other place where it appears is Lewis, in Lewis Art Center, and that's the newer art center. He made it very clear it's buried underground and services all of those four buildings. There's no visible utility plant and it's not next to homes. So even with respect to the university's operation, they have never had this type of plant. Their geothermal exchanges have been limited and hidden away. And the Lewis plant was obviously designed on a very small scale for those four buildings. And the apartments are obviously designed to service each apartment. So even with respect to the university's own actions, this has never been built on a campus. More importantly, it wouldn't matter if the university has had something similar. The question is not what is customarily incidental to Princeton University's operation. It's what is customarily incidental to a institution of higher education. And what that means is what is normally expected by those who need to use the zoning code to plan their lives? Because that's what a zoning code's for. It divides up functions in a community. Now, where in our community do we have utility facilities as a permitted use? Well, I know of one place, Princeton Shopping Center and the AET zone. Now, the AET zone is the only area of the educational places in the community where utilities are a permitted use. And the zoning code was very, very carefully drafted. And there's a reason for that, because there's a train station there. And so utilities were allowed to be there since it was always a train utility as part of that area. No other educational section is given a permitted use of utilities, public or utilities in general. It appears as a permitted use in the AET zone. The drafters of the code were very careful to limit where this could be. And it doesn't matter that in nineteen sixty-one, someone built the steam chiller plant. We're dealing with the modern zoning code we work with. And that zoning code very carefully did not include utilities as permitted uses in the educational zones, except the AET zone. Now, we can't ignore that structure under the guise of saying something's customarily incidental. When the code framers made it very clear there's one educational zone where utilities are permitted, where a utility structure is permitted. For this board to approve this is to disregard that very careful configuration. And it's not an accident. This is a residential neighborhood partly within and bordering a campus. It was designed to be a very special community which did not have these industrial facilities. And the zoning code does not recognize it. Now, what evidence is it that this is customarily incidental? There's no evidence. One person mentioned that Stanford had a geo exchange plant and said it was four times farther from any houses than this plant. And there was a vague reference to seeing a plant at Ball State Uni- excuse me, university. No one testified that as to where Ball State's plant was. No one from the university said, well, we've seen other universities and it's commonly done. We have these two vague references and that's all. And it was Mr. Nyquist who said the other places they saw plants were commercial facilities. So there's absolutely no evidence in this record to support this accessory use. The board would be abusing its powers and abusing the zoning code and disregarding that very careful structure to approve this. Now, before she left the board, because I made a motion to recuse Ms. Gunning, Ms. Gunning made a statement to the effect, well, you know, so many years of planning have gone into this. That is irrelevant. The university can't say we spent millions drilling these boreholes, millions designing the engineering. So let us have the approval. Don't make us abandon this now. Don't make us start over with the zoning board. It is irrelevant whether the university has been at this for years. Nothing forced the university to spend millions, and I'm sure it's been a vast sum, drilling boreholes before they knew whether this could be approved. And they came in with the vaguest form of application. An accessory use claiming it to be customarily incidental. So there can be no sympathy because the university has spent years developing this in millions of dollars. There was no justification for trying to leverage this board by saying, look what we've done for years. So to the extent the board believes that, it's wrong. That is not a valid consideration in evaluating this proposal. Now, we had some very interesting testimony from Mr. McCoy. I asked him very clearly why the sighting from the, um, excuse me, from the campus plan, what he called the framework, changed and now it's at Fitz Randolph. And at first he, when the community was speaking on prior meetings, he said, well, we had a higher prioritization for that site without going into detail. Well, after establishing what the soccer practice field was, he did finally say, we want to build something at that site that will be an active structure for the university, a structure that people will be present and using. He said it's an important part of the campus. It's going to be a gateway in the campus. And we want what's built there to be active where people use it. And he said, this is an empty facility. They want our people. We don't want to waste space on our campus where people should be mixing and merging. That's what's customary at a university. He made it very, very clear. He made it very, very clear. They want to push this thing as far away from their normal area of operation as possible, precisely because it's not what they want on their campus. He made it very clear, this is not what they want in an area of importance at a university. That's why they're pushing it to Fitz Randolph. That tells us this is not customarily incidental. If it was, there would have been no reason to move it from Denunzio. And so we have a situation in which the code doesn't recognize it as a permitted use. The code puts this as a permitted use only in the AET Zone, not in any other education zone. We have no evidence that this is commonly associated with college campuses, and certainly not single-family neighborhoods, and certainly not nursery schools. We have the university's own acknowledgement. It didn't want this where people will be mixing on campus. And then we have another problem. I put Mr. Cronin on for one reason in particular, and other witnesses spoke to this also in the community portion. Mr. Cronin made it very clear that he uses this neighborhood with his family. He walks, he bikes, he goes with his children around, and he says he always uses Fitz Randolph. Now, the university's been very careful to say, oh, you know, when you get to Todd's house, when you get to 168 Fitz Randolph, wherever these houses were, you know, the sound's attenuated. It begins to diminish a bit. Well, there's a little logic to that, of course. I very carefully asked Ms. Fisher, and it was like really pulling teeth, to finally say what the actual sound output would be when you go right in front of this new building, as people do now. They use this neighborhood. They walk down Fitz Randolph to go to the lake. They walk around and go up Broadmead. People do that all the time for exercise. People are doing it all the time now because we're all locked down, but they do it normally anyway. When you now walk past that, where that structure is going to be on Fitz Randolph, you're going to be met with a blast of up to 60 decibels. It doesn't matter whether it's only 20 feet of that frontage or not. When you walk past there on your pleasant walk to the lake, to walk around your neighborhood, you're going to walk past an industrial facility, and Ms. Fisher said you're going to be hit with up to 60 decibels. Parts of the structure may be 45. So you may walk past it, hit a 60, hit a 50, hit a 45. And that's what's going to happen to this neighborhood. And this is exactly what the code says should not be there. The code also says nuisance noise of the congregation of people, passenger traffic and delivery of goods. That is not what we're getting here. Another element of the code is being violated. And by the way, it makes no difference whether their goal is a good one of sustainability someday. They may not start out with sustainability. We hope they get there. That's wonderful. But that doesn't justify violating the code imposing continuous noise of an industrial nature. Ms. Wilson made the point, well, sometimes it'll be higher level, sometimes lower level. We have no statement as to the specifics of that. It's going to be running at full blast most of the time. It's going to be fueling a school with many buildings. They're even going to try to, you know, interconnect this to other parts of the campus. There'll be times when it's lower. There'll be times when it's mild. It will be lower. But when it's hot, when it's cold, it's going to be on full blast. And we have no evidence to suggest otherwise. So we're not getting the occasional incidental noise of the congregation of people, passenger traffic and delivery of goods. We know what that is. People walk down the road singing, you know, people talk, people play soccer, make a little noise, cars go back and forth, and occasionally a prime truck comes by to deliver goods. That's what's to be here, not continuous industrial noise. By every standard in the zoning code, this fails. Princeton has to meet a burden of proof. It can't. It simply cannot. This zoning code was designed not to permit this. They need to go get a use variance. And they don't want to because the very factors that we talked about tonight, that I've talked about, about how this is not customary in such a zone, and how it's contrary to the zone and its purposes, would almost certainly prevent them from satisfying at least the negative criteria on a use variance. Yes, they could show it's for sustainability, and that's a good thing. Maybe that's a positive criteria. But they cannot meet the negative criteria, the virtual destruction of life in this neighborhood. Now, Mr. Cronin said at the end, I don't want to listen to this noise all the time. I don't want a loud hum going on in my backyard constantly. I don't have that now, but I'm going to get it later. I'm going to get it then. And even if it may not be as horrible at the houses, and maybe Princeton could be right hypothetically, we'll never know until it's built, it's going to be horrible when you walk past it. It's going to alter life in the zoning district. And those people who use this district, who walk, who bike, who go with their children, who play on the fields, they're going to be met when they pass this structure with a blast of noise of 60 decibels. We heard testimony, and Ms. Fisher eventually acknowledged it, that every 10 dB is 100% increase in magnitude. You know, it's like the Richter scale where every 10th point is a doubling of the earthquake intensity. Every 10 dB of DBA, every 10 dB is a doubling of the magnitude. So we're going to go from the 35 figure at night at these houses off into a 45 figure according to the university's own figures. That's 100% increase in the magnitude of ambient noise at night when people sleep. There's no dispute about this. And Princeton very carefully, and I think Mr. Cohen may not have meant it this way, but he pointed out that there's no inconsistency in those numbers because they measure things at different times of the day. Princeton very carefully only took seven to eight. Didn't bother taking it when people are asleep. There's a doubling of the magnitude when people are, compared to what it is now when people are asleep. And Princeton, it does not deny that we're going to get those 40 to 45 ranges at night. When it's hot, when it's cold, those buildings are going heated, uncooled. And so we're going to double the intensity, double the magnitude of sound over the ambient that presently exists here in this neighborhood. The very fear that neighbors have that their lives will be ruined in itself means this is not customary in this district. People don't move next to a college campus to be living in fear of industrial sound. And you heard that expressed over and over by people. Now, if Princeton wants to do, Princeton doesn't need to do this. Princeton says it wants to reduce its carbon footprint. That's another element, by the way, of the use variance. You have to have to show, you've got a need for this that you truly have to have, and you can't have under the existing code. That's one element. Then there are negative criteria you have to prove don't arise. Princeton doesn't need this. They want to do it because they want to have a carbon footprint of neutrality in 2046. Well, it's a wonderful goal. I'm sure every one of us agrees with it. But that goal can't occur contrary to the zoning code unless they get a use variance. They don't want to do that because they know it's virtually impossible to win a use variance. And that's not an excuse to blur the law as to what is customarily incidental to a college. When we hear all these neighbors speaking of their fears about how it's inappropriate near a nursery school, how it's going to change life in that area, or they fear it will, and they have good reason to fear. We now know you walk past this, strolling through the neighborhood, you're met with a blast of 60 dB. All of this shows it is not customarily incidental, and there's no positive evidence Princeton offered. I was really shocked. I thought they'd come in into a survey of universities and show this has been going on for 25 years, and the college after college after college has this. Now, bear in mind, with its resources, and Princeton puts a lot of resources into these applications. If they had that evidence, they would have showed it. They pretended the issue of whether it's customarily incidental does not exist. And Mr. Bridger's report doesn't address it in substance either. He simply says it's a permitted accessory use. That is a conclusion of an expert, and Mr. Bridger is an expert. It is not a factually supported conclusion. The board cannot accept a conclusion without a factual basis. Casel is very clear on that point. Mr. Bridger does not explain in any manner how this can be customarily incidental to the uses in this zone. So on balance, we have a project that should not be approved. Princeton needs to go seek a use variance, which I guarantee it will never get. Princeton wants to push this project onto Fitz Randolph, even though it will have a serious adverse impact on this community because it wants to save its other space at Denunzio for a more conventional college operation. That alone tells us this cannot meet the customarily incidental test. I think you've heard a lot of evidence. This is the fundamental point. The other point is the code does not permit continuous industrial noise. This is not the occasional or incidental noise of the congregating of people, passenger traffic, and delivery of goods. This changes life forever in this district. Princeton wants this building to continue in operation for at least 50 years, till 2046 and beyond. Excuse me, at least 25 years and beyond. That will permanently change life for these people. This is not necessity. They could have put this at Denunzio. They don't want to. They could have put this farther from homes. They don't want to. And that proves the point. It's not compatible with a campus use. And therefore, it's not an accessory use in the E1 district. The very fact that they've had to work so hard to constantly change it to reduce levels of noise, and we don't know if that'll ever happen, demonstrates to us that this is not suitable for this location. There's other defects in this record, and they've been brought out. I don't need to address all of them here. But the primary problem is you will be dis-serving the community by approving this. Yes, you will be helping create a sustainable energy project that may someday, when there's more renewables in the grid, reduce carbon footprint substantially. That's wonderful. That's not your job. That's for the zoning board to consider as one of the positive criteria. Your job is to consider, is this customarily incidental to any of those uses, a nursery school, single-family homes, and a college? There is no evidence in the record to support that conclusion, and the record is filled with evidence to show that it is not. We have all of the comments of the community who say this is the last thing they expected when they moved in here. They are shocked that this will be next door to their children's nursery school. They never expected that function. They never expected to live with industrial noise on a continuing basis. You have a duty to protect these people. Your duty is not only to protect the right of a landowner to do what it wants with his land. That's a Fifth Amendment right, but it's tempered by the zoning code. We live with the zoning code. We don't have a Fifth Amendment right to do what we want with our property regardless of the code. This record is filled with evidence showing this cannot meet the standard. There is no evidence showing it is customarily incidental. And therefore, for these reasons, for the continuous noise which violates Section 263, which only allows occasional noise from people, cars, and goods, for all of the other reasons we've talked about, the unsuitability of this site, all of this tells us it is not a valid accessory use. And Princeton has offered no evidence to counter that. And the record is weighed down with evidence showing how unsuitable and dangerous it is for this neighborhood. The very fact that when you walk past this now, you're going to be hit with 60 dB forever, for the rest of your life living in this neighborhood, means it will change the patterns of use in that neighborhood, and it is not customary to this type of community. So we are asking you to reject this. If Princeton feels your decision is an error, it has the ability to go to court. I guarantee as a lawyer working in this field, no court will ever overturn your denial of this decision. Princeton has other places it can build this. It doesn't even have to build it here. They even said they're building other similar plants that will be interconnected. You don't need to build it on top of people's homes. You don't need to destroy life in this part of the community or create the fear in people that that will happen. Your job is not only to protect Princeton's right as a landowner. It's to protect the expectations of the people under this code. And frankly, for too long, projects have been approved without that full consideration. This is a classic example of where the landowner is overreaching. It needs to get a use variance if it can get it. It's trying to sneak this plan in under the wire, under the radar. It cannot be approved lawfully under the code. So we ask you to deny it. Do not pay attention to the millions they've spent drilling their boreholes. They could have waited. Two years on a 50-year utility project won't be a negative for them. They chose to leverage this by saying, look at all the work we've already done. That should not enter into your considerations. We ask you respectfully, and I thank you for all your time. These, I have gone on at length tonight, and we've asked a lot of questions because this is a permanent change in these people's lives, permanent. It never goes back again once it's built. And the evidence does not support this as customarily incidental. In fact, the evidence shows there are heavy, heavy negatives to building this in this community, in this section of the community, in violation of the code itself. Finally, I'll reiterate, there's only one place in the educational zones where utilities are permitted use. The council knew exactly what it was doing when it created these rules. Your approval of this will contradict that zone plan, that very careful thought-out plan. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Affron. Mr. DeGresia?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. So I'll keep this very brief. I do have to address Bruce's comments, but like I said, I'll keep it very brief. We all know that heating and cooling of campus buildings is a customary and incidental use to campuses. I can't really find one out there that probably doesn't do heating and cooling to buildings somewhere out there in, you know, across the nation. It is so customary that, you know, when you're looking at time from, you know, since coal-fired boilers to modern technology, it is something that you see on campuses. When, when you take a look at your code, the E1 zone is extremely broad. As, as Bruce pointed out, it does allow educational uses, educational activities, and anything customary and incidental. What Bruce doesn't understand is that this decision has been made over and over and over again. The actual power plants that run Princeton University are in the same exact zone. So the E1 zone has that application after application that involves steam boilers, water chillers, electric generators, chilled water plants, combined heating and power steam plants. And although the plant started in 1961, we have resolutions that are much more current. I mean, there was a big change in 1995 with the cogeneration plan. And at that time, and as part of that resolution, there's a clear statement from the board and from Derek Bridgers that's saying the use is a permitted accessory use and permitted in the zone. It is the exact same zone. The other point I'd like to make is that although I am talking about all of these great power plants and/or something less extreme like solar, which actually produces energy and is not specified in the code as Mr. Affron would like you to believe it has to be, they're all customary incidental to providing energy. This is actually far less intense. We've had lots of testimony that this is not an energy or power plant. It doesn't actually create the energy, but it stores it. So why is this important? It's because it's a very quiet, docile use. We've heard that it does not have combustion at the facility. There's no burning of natural resources, no burning of fuels, no emissions from the plant. The fans are to let the air through. There's no cooling towers. There's associated with this facility, no water vapor because we have a closed-loop system. There's even the, the natural gas generator that we have as a possible add-on in the future, but it's part of this whole plan, is, is a natural gas generator, not a diesel one. So although Mr. Affron has tried to flip it by saying this is a big industrial use, that's not the reality. The reality is that this is a quiet use, and it's a low-intensity and it's a low-intensity use, and it's put in this position because of those factors. You know, he talked about putting in the softball field there. Well, it really doesn't fit there, and Mr. McCoy had explained that. But the reality is, when you look at those kind of intensity of students and people coming in and out of, you know, 60-foot-high lights, of music, and loud practices, the soccer stadium, as we explained, is only used during actual games. It doesn't have that much intensity. The practice field's used all the time. Putting that right next to the neighborhood is a disaster. This is probably the most docile type of use you could put there. And upon that, we've gone through these models that shows that sound is well below the safety limits. And then, the university hasn't even stopped there. It put additional sound attenuation that brings it even further and further down. When you look at every element of this code, it's a completely permitted use, and it meets and far exceeds any protections. When you're talking about height, this zone allows 100 feet. We're half that. Looking at setbacks, looking at sound modeling, everything is not even close to where the limits are. It's well, well below. This is one of those really exciting projects that allows everybody to take a great step forward in terms of sustainability. It's a key part of the university's plan, but this municipality just adopted itself a green building, environmental, sustainability element of its master plan. You're probably not going to see a project that takes such a vast step forward in our lifetime. I hope we do, and that there's new technology out there. But right now, this is the best you can do by borrowing the natural temperatures of the earth, the heat and cool buildings. You're not burning steam, creating steam and burning natural resources. It's a fantastic project. When we took a look and we understand that the state of New Jersey has preempted the levels of what a municipality can set in terms of decibels. And we've been through this, and we've had that discussion with the municipal consultants. The state, in fact, in order to change decibel levels, the municipality would have to go through a process by adopting an ordinance and then sending it to the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection and actually getting them to approve it in writing. And that's something that applies uniformly. Despite an understanding of the boundaries, the university, like I said, has really tried to step up because they designed this to be a really quiet facility. They are, and they've added the walls, they lowered the size of the louvers, and they've taken a lot of steps. But in addition to that, we've heard what the community has said. You know, there's some concerns out there about it. And the university wants to make a representation, even though, you know, it's really beyond the board's area really to focus on. But the university wanted to make a representation to the community that it would stand behind. And I think I just want Ron McCoy, if he's there, if you could, just for the record, state that, Ron?
Right. I'm going to raise an objection at this point. The testimonial phase is over. We don't offer people to speak on testimonial matters at this point. That's not appropriate.
Okay.
Because now I have to respond, I have to cross-examine. The community might have comments.
Okay, the point is well taken, in that kind of way.
Thank you.
Well, in any event, like I said, this is really something wonderful. It phases out eventually as part of their project, the natural gas that's being burned to produce steam. And like I said, this is specifically designed to be low-intensity. You don't have the traffic, you don't have the people. It's a quiet, low-intensity, low-intense facility that fits perfectly into the area.
Mr. Degrassia, are you able to articulate what you were calling on Mr. McCoy to articulate?
Yeah, I could.
I don't want to go that, I mean,
Yeah.
pique my curiosity.
Absolutely. So...
I have a question, Louise. I'm wondering if Mr. Degrassia can speak to the concerns of the residents. What I've heard a lot from the residents is that they would like some sort of guarantee or some sort of promise, some sort of assurance that the decibel levels would be kept within a certain range. And if they weren't, that remedial action would be undertaken. And I do think that the board would like to respect and would feel much more comfortable moving forward if we knew that those residents, there was some assurance for those residents. And I'm wondering if...
Yes.
Thank you for being direct about it. That's exactly where I hoped we were going.
That's where I was sort of trying to get.
Please proceed with all good haste.
So in our discussions with my client, we talked about trying to make a representation that would be part of the record. And we came up with the following. Again, I think the real benefit here is the sound attenuation measurements, the big louvers, the smaller size, the sound wall, and our goals and modeling of meeting these really very low, below the state standards levels. However, we're willing to make a representation with a threshold, and I'd like to read that, so that it could become part of the record. "In order to make the unique operational noise generated by Tiger facility consistent with the specific noise characteristics of the facility's neighborhood, the applicant has agreed that the sound levels generated by Tiger operations shall not exceed 40 dB A levels as calculated by the New Jersey Administrative Code NJAC 7:29 on a consistent basis as measured at the nearby residential property lines. If the sound levels generated by Tiger operations are determined to consistently exceed the 40 dB A level as measured at the nearby residential property lines, the applicant shall engage a professional noise consultant and consult with the municipal engineer and health officer in good faith regarding additional practical mitigations. Any such mitigations that could effectively reduce the sound levels to not exceed 40 dB A shall be implemented by the university within a reasonable time, considering the nature of the mitigation, the requirement of permits or approvals, and the time to construct. This commitment shall not prohibit or restrict the continued operation of the Tiger facility, which provides hot and chilled water to heat and cool university facilities." So as I said, you know, this area is really preempted by the state. But, you know, listening to the community, the university is stepping up and, you know, sort of self-regulating here with this commitment to do as I stated in the paragraph.
May I comment, since this is new material, please? There is nothing in what Chris said that is in any manner, even in the slightest iota, enforceable by anyone. It's a very nice form of words. There is no power that can enforce it short of the neighbors going to the chancery division and seeking a court order forcing them to, one, reveal their figures, and, two, implement measures. This would require a major lawsuit by the neighbors if there's any possible hope of enforcing what Chris just said they would promise. There's also been no evidence in the record as to how they would guarantee to keep it to 40 dB A, as to what standards they would apply to remediating any problem. And therefore, it is not supportable by the record as a condition, since there's no evidence as to how they would meet this guarantee. In addition, it's not enforceable as a practical matter. No one has the power to compel Princeton to adhere to its own quote "self-regulation," close quote. This is a blind that developers often make. "Don't worry," and Mr. McCoy made it very clear, "trust us." Trust is in the gap. So this is another way of saying, "Trust us, we'll do the right thing." Well, I can tell you, it would require hundreds of thousands of dollars to litigate this issue, to force Princeton to meet what Chris just said is its guarantee. It is a completely non-enforceable provision. And there's nothing in the record to support that Princeton can meet this guarantee or what it would do to make sure of it.
Okay, that's noted. Thank you. Mr. Mueller, well, first, wow. Mr. Mueller, do you have suggestions about how to appropriately, well, it's been suggested, I'm sorry, it's late, and I know it's late for everybody. It's been suggested by neighbors and perhaps by board members as well that we might consider a condition that would require an after-the-fact decibel test or series of tests. And what I hear the university's council representing is that is a commitment to remediate, a promise to remediate a condition that is greater, you know, emitting noise greater than 40 decibels. And by my, you know, Googling decibel level charts, you know, 40 decibels is described as about as loud as a computer or a babbling brook, you know. And 50 decibels, which is twice as loud, is described as light traffic, and 60 as conversational speech. I mean, 40 decibels is pretty darn quiet. So if that is the commitment the university is making, and we can place a condition that really does commit and compel the university to take remedial action. If they aren't meeting that standard, then it seems like, well, I guess I started out by posing this question to you, Mr. Mueller. And I should pose it to you as well, Mr. Degrassia. Can we can we get to that condition?
Well, Madam Chair?
Yes, sir. I'm sorry. Is that Mr. McGowan?
It is Mr. McGowan.
I couldn't see which square on my screen lit up.
Oh, that's all right. It's getting late.
Yes, it is. Yes.
Before Mr. Mueller answers the question, I had planned to make a proposal that goes to this. Can I make that now as part of what we're going to do?
Sure.
What I was going to propose, I was looking back through the exhibits presented by the university. And there's the one. It says "Sound Levels Future." And you have that, what I'll call a bullseye chart. And it shows, and it shows throughout, you know, the eight locations, I believe, where there are decibel levels. And there's also the blue line says, it's essentially projected, they're projected levels. I was going to suggest that as part of any motion, whatever, that there be a commitment that six months after this is built, that measurements are taken at these locations to see actually what's there. And then another six months after that, then do that again. I think both of those should be a part of any resolution, if you will, of the matter, along with what was suggested by Mr. Degrassia. So that was sort of my suggestion. I don't know if it's a motion yet. I don't know if you want to include it as a motion, but that was something I thought would be a good suggestion as a way to resolve this.
And just so, maybe Jerry could pose sort of specific questions. But you're talking about locating decibel meters at specific locations as represented in the chart that was...
Well, yeah. I mean, that's what the university used to say essentially, you know, "You're not going to have these problems." So I'm suggesting you use the same locations that the university used. They could go back again.
Now, what Mr. Degrassia said was at the property lines, and I don't know whether that's the same locations or whether they had some of those meters, you know, on the sides of homes, for example.
Location four was where Mr. Cronin lived. He says he lived there. See, I'm looking at it. You know, there's another one, I believe, next to the nursery school. And there's three others, so... That was my suggestion.
So the reason why the statement reads as it does with the property line is because the New Jersey Administrative Code has a very in-depth, I guess, procedure for how and the way noises are measured. And that's basically the standard under the code. But, you know, it would be basically where those measurements are today. Because we did, you know, we did do those two measurements. But that's essentially the representation would be pretty much committing to the 40 dB A at those, you know, those general locations.
At those locations as...
That's how the statute reads.
I just want to point out, this proposal will not address noise at the facility as people use Fitz Randolph for recreation. So even if it worked...
I believe you had your opportunity to speak.
Excuse me. No, no, it doesn't work that way. You don't get to lobby for conditions, and the object to remain silent. There's no approval of this plan by the board yet. We are not in the stage of doing conditions only. We're dealing with the merits and the substance right now. There's been no vote.
But, Mr. Affron, the representation of 60 decibels is below a state limit, and it's on a public road. I mean, I don't know...
I think you're missing the point.
And it's quieter than a car passing by. I mean...
I think I'm missing the point entirely, that in terms of the zone plan, people use this neighborhood, they use that street. They're now going to be walking in front of 60 decibels. This plan to self-enforce out by the houses, though it's unenforceable anyway, doesn't address that other problem. I'm just pointing that out.
Okay.
I'm going to move approval of the application so that we can get to the discussion of the conditions. Hopefully, I can get a second.
I'll second it.
Yeah, I would like to make a little bit of a comment before we continue with the discussion of the conditions. I think that Chris, I really agree with Chris's points about...
I, I, I think that Chris, I really agree with Chris's points about the fact that cooling and heating is a quintessential accessory use to any building anywhere. But even beyond that, it's absolutely typical to have central heating plants for any large collection of buildings under single ownership. And that's what we're talking about here. It's, it's a heating and cooling plant, central, a central heating and cooling plant. So I think that the idea that this would not fit squarely in a permitted accessory use is, is hard to, hard to support. And then the other thing that I just wanted to talk about, and I, I know that all of our acoustical consultants have resisted using the decibel equivalence that you can find all over the internet. But just for, and I know that different qualities of sounds have different levels of annoyingness and all that stuff, but I just want to remind the members of the board that 60 decibels is, in these charts, as normal conversation. That's the level of sound we're talking about. So both the neighbors and Mr. Afron have been characterizing 60 decibels as like, you know, the, the sound level under an airplane taking off or something, that this is, it's this horrendous industrial noise level. And it, it just isn't. 50 decibels is light traffic, 40 decibels is a babbling brook. So, you know, the university here is offering 40 decibels in good faith to, not just to strive for that, but to actually maintain it. And I just don't see any legal basis for this board to reject an application that's conforming in every way and actually more than, more than 20 decibels below the state standard for daytime noise levels and 10 decibels, half the noise level of the state standard for nighttime levels. So that's, that's my preach.
And I would just like to say that, you know, we're, we've been trying to balance a number of competing community concerns, one for sustainability, the other for the living, the quality of life of the neighbors who would live near the plant. And I think this has been a really difficult application, and this seems to me to represent a good compromise. And I, I, I think the, the university has come a long way since where they started and have tried to accommodate the neighbors' concerns. And I, I think that we want to make sure that this is complied with, and, and I would like Jerry to speak to, or Chris to speak to, how, what the, what the mechanism is for ensuring that there is, that this guarantee is met and complied with. I, I think we would feel much more comfortable with that. And Mr. Afron, to your point about if it weren't complied with, it would cost hundreds of thousands of dollars to litigate, but just a little while ago, you mentioned that this was all basically a setup for, that we were to be patient because this, your questions were based on the plan to go to court. So I would imagine the hundreds of thousands of dollars would be available in either then or later. So if it's gonna be litigated, it's gonna be litigated. But I think our hope here with the board is that we would avoid litigation. It's not what we want in the community, and being part of a community is all of us reaching compromises. And I think we have reached, from my perspective, we've reached that point. And I would just like to hear Jerry and/or Chris talk about the compliance mechanism for the guarantee.
It's Mia. Let me make a couple of points.
Mia addressed this up to me. I want to respond to something.
No, wait, I am gonna talk. There's a motion, and, and you cannot speak, Bruce.
I am going to speak, Jerry.
You are not going to speak at this point. You are not going to speak at this point, and we will mute you.
Jerry, you do not have that right.
There is a motion. You do not have a right to participate.
We have a motion and a second, and the board is having its discussion right now. And Mia invoked your name, but I don't think addressed a question to you. So, Mr. Muller, one of you.
Excuse me, Louise. It is not appropriate for the board to direct questions at the applicant, get answers from the applicant during the board deliberation, and then say to the objectors' council, "Sorry, you can't be heard."
These, these questions have to do with, with conditions to an approval that has been moved and seconded. And so that is the discussion we are having right now. And.
The conditions matter, they're not the application itself. And if you're asking for new information prior to the board's vote, it is not.
We're, nobody is asking for new information. We are trying to nail down a set of conditions that is fair and that the neighbors have made crystal clear they would like to see if there is an approval. So.
My point is very simply procedural.
For Afron, you're.
No, excuse me, Louise. There's, there's no sense trying to silence a lawyer because I need to do certain things here. All right? Now, the point is this, you have not voted on the application. You are now asking the applicant to explain more of what he's willing to do before you vote on the application. This is not a matter of discussing conditions after the approval and asking for technical input. You're asking.
We don't discuss conditions before we.
Or the approval.
Not after.
No, because when you frame a memorial, there is often discussion about how to draft the actual language, if there is debate about whether the draft is to be approved. But if you're asking the applicant right now to make representations about what it will do, and you refuse to let objectors speak to those issues, that's not appropriate.
Then if.
Decision.
So if I was, was I the one that asked the question of the app?
Well, Mia, you went on mute.
If I was the one that asked the question of the applicant, I think I said Jerry and/or Chris, because I wasn't sure who was the appropriate person. But I withdraw the question, and I would just like to leave, it seems, I would like to, to just leave my second, and I think we should move to a vote. And I withdraw.
Both sides should weigh in on these issues. That's all I'm saying.
Mr. Muller, you were.
Yeah, let me, let me respond in terms of a couple of questions that, that were raised by the representation that, that Chris indicated. That would be included as a condition. And I would suggest, because I thought Mr. Afron's point was a good one about you, you, there are questions about how you enforce it. And part of what Chris read is if the sound levels generated by tiger operations are determined to consistently exceed the 40 dBA level as measured in nearby residential property lines, I would just make it property lines. And shall consult with the municipal engineer and health officer with respect there too. So that, I, I've added that as a way of wrapping the municipality into that. So we're not just not leaving, although certainly one could make a judgment, you could just, you can trust the university on this. But I think we want the, the municipal staff to be part of this process in terms of a determination of whether the 40 dBA level has been exceeded on a consistent basis. So I would suggest that as, as a modification of what's proposed, and certainly as I indicated, would be a condition. And Alvin, I think rather than identifying those particular sites, I would just say the resident, at the closest residential property, property lines.
Wait, I'm sorry, Jerry, you said residential property lines, the way we proposed.
That's a close, that's the closest property lines.
Well, closest property lines don't work because we have property lines like on Faculty Road and that are our own property lines. It has to be.
Okay. Okay. So that's a, that, that's a condition that we can impose if it's a pleasure of the board, and I would suggest the additional language that, that I just described.
I don't want to be remiss if this goes to litigation. Will there be public posting of these figures? I mean, how will the community learn that? I don't agree that this is enforceable, but I also don't want to be remiss in failing to point out that the neighbors have to have access to this information on a current basis.
Yeah, it's a reasonable point.
So that has to be.
And I thought we were talking about, as Mr. McGowan had mentioned, a, a testing or a series of measurements some period of time after, shortly after the facility is completed and up and running. And that, yes, certainly those, those numbers absolutely should be available to the public.
So there has to be a methodology built in to how that will be conveyed, whether it be constantly posted on a university website, whether it will be, there's gotta be a mechanism. Now, I be clear, I don't want to be remiss in not pointing this out, but I do not agree that this would satisfy the concerns and objections we've raised. But if this condition's gonna be there, the community has to have current, regular, real-time access to the information.
Okay, well, and.
We, we could do one of two. I'm, I'm sorry.
Well, I was going to say, Jerry, the, the condition that you were reading represents that these measurements will be taken or readings, readings will be taken on a consistent basis. So that means, you know, consistent time and not in a six-month period of time.
I'm sorry, we did not, we, we were not proposing that we're taking ongoing measurements. That's just an owner's task. What we did say, the sentence is, "If the sound level generated by tiger operations are determined to consistently exceed the 40 dBA level as determined at the nearby residential property lines, the applicant shall engage a professional noise consultant and consult with the municipal engineer and health officer in good faith regarding additional practical mitigations. Any such mitigations that would effectively reduce the sound levels to not exceed the 40 dBA shall be implemented by the university within a reasonable time." That's, that's what we were saying. I, I, you know.
Okay, I, I, I hear you. Mr. Cohen has his hand up, and Mr. Chow, you raised your hand also.
And Tim has his raised virtually.
Oh, Tim, sorry.
For a while, but.
I did not see that. Sorry about that.
Yeah, I just want to quickly suggest that we pick a time at a peak season, right? So maybe, you know, July 30th, the first year that the facility is up and running to do the measurements, because we know that that's when the noise levels will be the highest, and that give the, the neighbors the most protection.
That's, that was exactly my point. That's the point, when, when all the pumps are running, all the chillers are running, and the, and the louvers are open. So that's the noisiest time is that time of year. And the rest of the year, when the louvers are closed in the winter, it, it's not gonna, it's not gonna be a problem.
Okay.
So, so what, I said, tell me again, when, when we're gonna, we're now gonna specify timeframes, and I think we need them. The way I was gonna address it, and I still think we should include this language, is that they're gonna turn, determine whether it's consistently 40 dBAs or below, and shall consult with the, with the municipal engineer and health officer with respect there too, just so that we had this interaction with staff. But I think in addition to that, the idea of specifying times when measurements will be taken, and maybe, maybe more often, is a good idea. So again, when would that be?
July, July 30th.
May I suggest the board pick a week or a month, not a day, if it's raining? You're, you're messing yourself up. It's too narrow.
Yeah, that's a good, great point. Maybe the second half of July or something like that.
Or maybe we shouldn't, I'm sorry, maybe we shouldn't micromanage it and leave it up to our staff, you know, working in conjunction with the university as to when the measurement should be taken.
Okay, but, but, but I think the points taken, made here make a lot of sense, and I'm, I'm hearing that Mr. O, Mr. Keefe agrees with that.
Yeah, I haven't sat here for five and a half hours to say nothing. So hi, everyone. Hope you're having a good early morning.
Um, Mr. Quinn, do you use?
I, I just, are we gonna have board discussion, or are we going to go over the, the conditions and then have board discussion? Because I'm ready for either.
Okay. Well, Mr. Muller,
But I would like.
Let's have board discussion while Mr. Muller sort of refines the, the conditions. So would you like to start us off?
Sure, I would. Actually, I'd be continuing the conversation of, of the discussion of my colleagues. And first of all, thank you, Madam Vice Chair, for, for leading this, this meeting. It's exemplary, everyone's fatigue. I wonder if the people whose cameras are off are, have fallen asleep. I, you know, I, I, how many meetings have we had? How many hours have we spent on this? I feel that Ms., Councilwoman Sack said at one point that she, she felt like this was a, you know, a family argument. And I must say that I feel like I'm the neighbor of a family that's arguing, and I'm being asked to mediate this argument. And I think the boards made a good faith effort in an impossible situation. I have a lot of respect for the university's planning process and, and for their eventual outreach to the neighbors. And I've appreciated their effort to blunt the visual impact of, of the towers. And there's no arguing the, that it's an exciting project and that it's a, it's the sustainability factor is good and that I, I love that, that what, where they're going with their, with their push for carbon neutrality. And I'd say that I think this is just the wrong location for this. You know, I think there's a compelling argument to be made that they got it right the first time when they picked that site near Denunzio. I, I'd also point out that if they moved it a little bit east across Harrison Street, that they have 33 vacant acres that are sitting there, where they could put it in the middle of the Butler Tract, and no one would hear it at, at any point. So I'm, I'm open to hearing the discussion from my other colleagues, but at this point, I intend to vote no, because I, I just think that this is the wrong location for a lot of the reasons that have been articulated. It's right next to a school, it's in a residential neighborhood. And as far as, as holding them to a decibel level, if they could be held to, if we're saying if it's above the babbling brook level, and that's a brook that's babbling all the time, by the way, it's more like, it's more like a hum. We're going to basically say, build it and then mitigate it. Why can't they just ensure that it's not going to reach that level now? It just strikes me that once the thing is built, unringing that bell is going to be difficult to impossible, even, even trusting, which I do, that the university is acting in good faith. Again, I, I applaud everyone, my colleagues for sitting patiently through all these hearings, and I just, I'm more convinced than ever that this is just the wrong site for this. So unless you can convince me, I'll keep an open mind, but as of now, I intend to vote no.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Quinn. Other members want to discuss, express your views? Mr. Cohen?
I, I just want to respond to one aspect of Mr. Quinn's comment, which is that, and maybe I have more faith in the design calculations, being an architect and doing this kind of stuff all the time. But to me, it's super clear that the university is committing to the 40 decibel level because. because they're so confident that the design will fall under that level. So, you know, your, your point, Tim, that why don't they design it right and then not have to come back and fix it? I think that's exactly what they've done.
If you, you know, when, when we're talking.
Fair enough, fair enough, Mr. Cohen. We're in, we're in board discussion now, Mr. Degrassi. And I thank you for that. And I was, I was speaking on behalf of the English majors of the world, Mr. Cohen. I, and I always appreciate your perspective as a, as an architect.
Thank you both. Anybody else? Okay. Mr. Muller, are you ready to articulate the conditions?
Yes. Let me just go through them. First, I'm going to go through the conditions that are in my notes. I think a lot of them have been resolved by this condition with respect to the 40 dBA, if that's the pleasure of the board needs to, needs to go that route. Just bear with me.
These lawyers always like to take their time and get their thoughts organized.
I guess in the spirit of of, you know, discussing what's been said and, and where, where we're coming down, I I, I just don't buy the argument about there being just no evidence that this is customarily incidental. I think that, that it is. And I've been impressed by the degree to which the university has worked to address the concerns of neighbors. And I, I, being a person that is sensitive to noise in my neighborhood, I, I really do understand why people are concerned. And I and, and like Mr. Cohen, I guess, and, and some others, I sense, I feel confident that the university is committed to, has already redesigned to a, to a a very high standard. And, and while it might not be, you know, the perfect optimal location, it is acceptable, in my view. So I, if anybody else wants to opine, now, now is the time to do it before Jerry, before Jerry lays out the, the conditions and we take a vote.
When, when Jerry's going through and getting ready, I also like to add, because we didn't have a chance to mention it, that we would also like early start to be incorporated if the board is making a favorable motion.
Noted.
Could you repeat that? I couldn't hear that.
That was our early start, the ability to work with the engineer on certain items, you know.
He's asking that that be part of the approval.
Thank you.
Okay. This continuing with my notes, virtually all of them about noise and possible monitoring, et cetera, et cetera.